Good afternoon, everyone. I'm John Laria, Chair of the Planning Commission. This is the October 9th, 2025, meeting of the Commission, number 2079. Welcome. I want to apologize for a little bit of a late start. We had the mayor here, some of you, depending on who might have been here. The mayor was here to pay tribute to our retiring Director of Planning, Chris Ryer, who deserves all the praise that we could heap upon him, and the mayor presented a nice citation, so I apologize. It has held us up by a few minutes. But I also want to acknowledge, of course, Chris's extraordinary service, as I did then. That does, of course, lead me to make special note of the fact that sitting at my right is our new Planning Director, Tim Keen, whom we welcome to Baltimore. And we're looking forward to working with him, both in the Commission and, of course, at the Department. Tim, is there anything you wanted to say at the outset? Just wanted to...
No.
Okay. Just wanted to give you an opportunity. So, welcome.
I've been around, most recently Charleston, South Carolina. But I spent seven years in Atlanta as the Planning Commissioner there, and a couple cities in the West. So, here in Baltimore now. Glad to be here.
We were, as the Commission, I guess I'll just say for the record, the Commission is charged under the Charter with recruiting candidates and recommending candidates to the mayor, which we did. Tim was our unanimous choice. We recommended him to the mayor in that way. The mayor spent time with him as well and agreed, and then the mayor, using his authority, because it's ultimately his choice, appointed him to be the Planning Commissioner. We are very fortunate to have him here. We're, of course, at the Commission, and I know the Department are looking forward to working with him. So, once again, welcome, Tim. So, Mr. T, so would you call the role, please, of Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Robin Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Bullock.
Present.
Christine Griffin.
Present.
Talib Horn.
Present.
Claudia Jelin.
Present.
Doug McCouch.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Justin Williams.
Present.
Eric Stevenson.
Present.
And John Laria.
Present, thank you. So, we have a quorum. We'll proceed. Commissioners, we have minutes to approve from the September 18th meeting. Is there a motion to approve them, please?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. We'll now turn to the items on the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda here is CIP transfers, as is our practice. They are posted on the website. We do ask the staff to comment on those transfers, and these are from the October 1st, yes, 2025 Meeting of the Board of Estimates. We do ask the staff to comment on ones that are considered to be not consistent with the CIP. Would you please just introduce yourself for the record, and thanks.
Nelson Vaskinselloz, Capital Planning Analyst for Department of Planning.
So, would you just cover for us? I think you've got, it looks like transfer number one in this packet is not consistent with the CIP. I just wanted you to comment.
Correct. So, the Phase 5 of the Jones Falls Trail Project has been completed, so Wreckin' Parks would like to transfer those excess funds to other projects that meet pressing needs, and as a result, we recommend approval.
Can you just comment? I know generally the Greenway, but can you just tell us, if you know what it means when we say Jones Falls Greenway, Phase 5D? What does that actually refer to? Because removing fronts...
I'll have to see exactly what that phase entails, but I will get back to you.
Okay. I just, I mean, no objection, and I'm sure the staff has reviewed it, but I want to make sure that, you know, we're moving these things and not leaving something undone or a place that we could be using those additional resources as allocated. So, it would be great, and you can do this at the next meeting or by communication to the Commission in between, if you would just clarify that a little bit. What is the Greenway Phase 5?
Absolutely.
You know, how do we know that it's done? And so on, and so on. And if it came in under budget, that would be great. If you can find out how to make other things come in under budget, that would be very helpful.
I'll work on that.
So, please let us know. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the CIP transfers on the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ours nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's move to the regular agenda items. Mr. Executive Secretary, would you please call the next item on the agenda for us?
Certainly. And Nelson will present this one also. This is Baltimore City Public Schools System Capital Improvement Program, fiscal years 2027 through 2032. Nelson?
Thank you. So, I'll just provide a brief overview, and Maureen Gersberg with City Schools will provide more detail on their capital improvement program. Just wanted to point out that the, there we go, City School CIP process operates a little bit differently than other city agencies. So, three-fourths of the money approximately comes from the state. As a result, the requests go through their state's public school construction process. So, it is first approved by the school board prior to coming here to the Planning Commission, then it goes through to the Board of Finance, Board of Estimates, et cetera. Then the mayor's office offers their support of the program, and then it goes to Annapolis, where it's voted upon. And then, upon that approval, the city's share of that package becomes part of the city's CIP. So, we recommend approval as the funding will address gaps in school overcrowding, particularly in the south and southeast sectors of the city, and provide students with a welcoming environment for learning. I will pass it along to Maureen Gersberg now. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Maureen Gersberg. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Strategy with Baltimore City Public Schools. All right. Today, we'll go over the FY27 Capital Improvement Program, as well as give an overview of our major capital projects. The CIP aligns with our Board Priority 3. And this looks a little different than mine, so there might be some other things that got jumbled up in the translation, but, so apologies if that does happen. This is a slide that we've added this year, just because we always get a lot of questions around the required state documents. So, every year to the state, we submit a comprehensive educational facilities master plan, the CIP Capital Improvement Program, as well as a comprehensive maintenance plan. And these are all partner documents that the state requires, that, if you think about it, the CE FMP is the overlying kind of mother of the documents, and then the CIP and CMP feed off of that in terms of the different analyses and data points.
I have your originals, the PDF, if you want me to go to that, so it doesn't get crammed into our template. Would you prefer that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I actually have to share. I should screen for the folks at home, one.
We are looking forward to your Civil Air Patrol presentation.
I'm trying to get a... Of course, I have to hit the kids' screens.
Yep. All right. Thanks. So, these are the topics that we'll be covering: capital funding, facilities and demographic changes, our CIP requests, a summary of our major projects, and then looking forward. All right. So, first, we'll start with capital funding. And one of the differences that we'll be seeing in the presentation this year compared to past years is a greater emphasis on the local planning, given that the amounts that we have been receiving are increasing and slated to increase even more. So, this is our current landscape. When we look at the costs needed for Baltimore City Public Schools, we use a methodology called the CRV, the Cost of Replacement Value. And so, when you look at that, based upon the square footage, the total amount that we need to maintain and provide appropriate capital funding is $547 million annually. We receive about $140,000, so there is a significant shortfall, which means that we are often having to make difficult decisions on what can be done and what might need to be postponed and what is prioritized. Capital decisions are based upon physical system factors, such as work orders or lifecycle information. And then, we also overlay our district priorities. So, looking at our CE FMP, as I mentioned, the CMP, we look at any decisions that have come out of our annual review, which occurs in January every year, where we talk about mergers and closures and just district priorities. This is a graph showing our recurring funding. So, there are one-time funding sources that have had a huge impact on our portfolio, still Built to Learn, 21st Century Buildings Program. However, when we think about our planning and long-term, we look at the recurring funding. And so, here you can see the state's CIP in blue. You can also see Healthy Schools, which was a pretty significant pot of money that we've been receiving, but I'll talk more about that later. And then, the city's CIP, which, as we can see, has been increasing last year for FY26, and then again this year. And you can kind of just see that the different amounts over time are varying. We're about to see significant losses on the state's side, which I'll get into.
Could I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you just...
Sorry, I can't go back.
Oh, that's okay.
There you go. Yeah.
It's not so much a question about this slide, it's more of a preliminary matter. Could you just talk very broadly about the ownership of the school systems, real estate and physical assets, and sort of the overall funding? It's a little bit weird at the beginning, but I'd just like to, you know, the director's new, I'm relatively new. Be helpful if you could just do a quick overview of who owns what and who's sort of responsible for what, and, you know, and if you could just back up a step, that would be really helpful.
Absolutely. And if I'm going off in the direction that you're not anticipating, let me know. So, Baltimore City Public Schools used to be under the same umbrella as every other city agency. And then, back in, I believe, the late '90s, there was a separation. And so, our legal team has told me that quasi-governmental agency is not the correct term, but basically, we broke off, even though we are still part of Baltimore City. If you look at CodeMap, or kind of where parcels are shown for ownership, the underlying owner of the majority of our buildings is Baltimore City. However, you'll see that responsible agency is education. So, we maintain our buildings. We are, if there's a complaint about overgrown grass, like, we go ahead and fix it. Like, they are our responsibilities, even though the underlying owner is technically Baltimore City. Does that answer it?
Yeah, it's helpful. And then, and then, so how does the, just talk a little bit broadly about how the capital needs are funded. I mean, you've got different uses there, but just talk generally about it, how the sources all kind of meet in the middle and how they get, how it funds the capital needs of the system.
Yep. And so, the main funding sources that you see here for recurring funds, the state's CIP, that is, while it has been a little bit higher in the past, at this point going forward, we're just assuming it's going to be about $25 million each year. And so, that has, each of these funding sources has certain stipulations. So, with the state funding, the project needs to meet certain requirements. They look at, for example, if we're asking for money for an addition, we need to be able to justify enrollment and overcrowding at that space, and we need to look at adjacent schools to say that we can't just rezone. So, we have to meet those kinds of stipulations. Additionally, there are utilization requirements for our CIP funding, which has definitely been a limiting factor in the past, which is one of the reasons why we might haven't been able to invest in some of our buildings where there have been significant demographic changes and less students over years, but it kind of gets into a chicken-and-egg situation because we can't invest in those buildings because of these rules that the state has. So, that's CIP funding. Healthy...
And may I, I'm sorry, just, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I think you said something about consistent over time. I don't know if you're talking about the state, but the state's CIP number is quite erratic, or at least relatively speaking, percentage-wise.
Yes.
So, what's the, what's the sort of up and downs of the blue state CIP bar?
Yes. So, the 29, like, it was very similar to that beforehand, I believe. There were some up and downs. The $46 million was only supposed to be about, I believe, 25 or 30, but that's when Governor Moore came in and released additional funds. So, that was a bonus. And considering kind of all the news that we hear at the state level, we don't anticipate that 26, 27 amount increasing significantly going forward. So, for our planning purposes, we're assuming, in our out-year planning, about $25 million coming from the state's CIP each year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Orange, that has not always been around, but that's been a really helpful pot of money that we've been able to access. So, that's the Healthy Schools Fund, and I'll get into it on the next slide as well. So, that fund comes from the state level for all of the jurisdictions in Maryland, and it was originally $90 million, and we were guaranteed half. That was built into the law. That fund expires FY26. And the timing's a little weird. I know we're doing FY27 CIP, but simultaneously, we're doing FY26 Healthy Schools, HSFF. So, that fund is expiring. The state is creating a new funding source called the Nancy Cott Facility Priority Fund. We, that, instead of $90 million for the whole state, that's only going to be $70 million. And we're also not guaranteed 50% of it, the way we were historically. So, that's why you see that question mark for the FY27. We don't know how much we're going to get from that, and that's one of the things that will keep coming up in this presentation, while we are ecstatic that the city is providing additional funding. At the same time, we're getting hit with the decrease in what was previously the Healthy Schools, because we don't know what that's going to look like, though, given the fact that it's only $70 million instead of $90 million, we do feel pretty confident we will not be receiving as much as we have historically on that. So, those are our recurring funds. Any other questions on those?
Chief Speaker? Keep going, Tim.
Yep. All right. So, this is just a summary of that Healthy Schools situation that I went over. These are some one-time, the one-time funding sources that, I said again, have been absolutely crucial in getting us leagues ahead of where we were back in 2013, but we can't, all of those funds have been accounted for. So, it's not like we can use any of this funding for projects in the out-years. So, now, we'll talk about facility needs and demographic changes. This is a map that we include in our CE FMP, and as folks are aware, a lot of, there's been a lot of demographic changes in Baltimore City over the past 10, 15 years. We've seen huge numbers leaving West Baltimore, while we've also seen a lot of students coming online in the south and southeast specifically. And these are some of the factors that we look at when we determine what our CIP list is for the coming year. So, there's going to be two CIP requests specifically related to these demographic changes that we've seen. So, this is the far southeast, and one of the projects that we are requesting for the CIP is the, replacing a lot of systems and basically renovating that far southeast building that is currently used as swing space for Commodore John Rogers. We were originally going to surplus it, and then for annual review last year, given the data that we are tracking and our increasing enrollment in this part of the city, we decided not to surplus it back in January. And so, this is us kind of continuing to build upon that in hopes that we can open up a new school here in either 20, we're still firming up timelines and budgeting. It'd be summer '27 or summer '28. We have to pick a date when we submit the form, so we have said summer '27 for this. Commodore John Rogers is currently swinging there. They'll be vacating the building January '27. So, in the ideal world, we request funding, we can make improvements, and it's ready for students fall '27, but we're still fleshing that out.
Just for context, can you, can you go back? I can't remember.
Yeah, I can. I figured it out.
What's the net citywide change? I mean, you've obviously done it by area, but, but is...
We've lost almost, I want to say roughly, 9,000 to 10,000 students since 2015.
On a base of how many, please?
So, we are looking about 76,000 for this year, and we were about 84,000, 85,000, I think, about in 2015.
And we're losing them because of age difference? Like, are people in different places in the age, or are people, families leaving the city? Do we know, or does the school system keep track of what the loss is due to?
Yeah. So, we cover all of that in the CE FMP, and it's a number of factors. We've had lots of out migration from the city. We've also had declining birth rates. We were losing, on average, about 1,800 Black students each year. That finally slowed down a lot last year for the first time, and it was only about 470, I believe. And then, this year, it's about, I want to say, 580 unofficially. We're still cleaning up our official 930 enrollment. So, that was a hu, those were huge losses that we were seeing, just huge decreases in our Black population. However, at the same time, we knew that our Latino population was increasing, and so, for a while, those Latino gains were able to offset the Black losses. And we were finally starting to, last year was the first time that enrollment gained in 10 years, and because those Latino losses were outweighing the Black losses. In addition, the Black losses weren't as significant as they were historically. However, just looking at unofficial data, this is not, we're still cleaning up our 930 data. Initial numbers show that our Latino increases are nowhere near what they were historically, and given some of the federal directions that we've seen, we are, we are tracking that change.
And the loss of Black students, can you attribute that? What's the prevailing factor is, that is contributing to that loss?
So, we don't necessarily have a direct reason for that. It's, we did, we have looked at like public-private enrollment, but just in general, the overall city has seen, the amount that the city has declined population-wise correlates with the decreases that we've seen in our student population as well. So, it's not necessarily that the students are, like, choosing an alternative, like a private school, it's that Black families are leaving Baltimore City.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm asking these questions not because I want to become an expert in the, all the school system, but I think the larger question of population growth and loss, to the extent that we can learn anything, or one informs the other in the school system, that's kind of the thrust. So, it would be useful to me if you could, if at some point, we could talk about that. You know, it's how does the school, what are the lessons learned from the school system, and what are the correlations and so on? And I certainly don't want to get into it now, but that, I think, would be worth understanding a bit. And you obviously have access to all that information. I don't think most, I think most people think about population loss and decline aren't really thinking about it via the lens of the school system, but you obviously are. So, it'd be helpful.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I could just highlight something that Ms. Gersberg has already said or made reference to, the chicken-and-egg problem that we have with investing in the schools that are in that red area, which, you know, are predominantly Black communities. And again, she's already acknowledged that the funding challenges that prevent us from investing in those schools, you know, I think have a lot to do with the reduced enrollment and the population decline we see in those neighborhoods, and it affects, as the numbers show, you know, Black residents usually more. So, when we have that conversation, I think, you know, it's a lot of compelling information to review.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Ms. Vice Chair and colleagues. I'll just add to this. One of the things that we also see demographically is not only the loss of Black population, but particularly Black middle-class population that's been declining in the city. So, that's one of the driving factors that affects the school system. And then, to the vice chair's point, having to represent parts of southwest Baltimore that have lost that population, and to your point in terms of the growth in Hispanic population, that have been masking that loss for some time.
Councilman, I'm trying to do this just from memory, but how much of that red area does your district overlap with? It's substantial, isn't it?
It's substantial enough.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. Of the completed 21st Century Schools that are, that might be located in that red area or whatever, what's the population growth there? Are they get, because of the additional investment in those schools, do they see an increased population for that asset that's been?
It's nuanced. So, sometimes, when we open a brand-new school, we see a large influx, but it can, especially with some of the schools where we might have had mergers or closures, there might be some growing pains along with that, as they might adjust to a new principal or a new grade configuration. So, the two I'm thinking of specifically are Catherine Johnson and Billie Holiday, which are, they're paired together. They're a pre-K to 2 and a 3 to 8. And so, while we've seen kind of, honestly, it's been a little, there hasn't been like a steady trend of increasing over time, it's been a little more rolling. But it definitely saw the initial increase when they did open. Any other questions on this? Okay. All right. So, one of our CIP requests is going to be to open a new school. Again, we are absolutely still figuring out the timing and the financing of that. There is flexibility with this, given it is FY27, and we're only requesting, I think, about 1.8. So, we will adjust as needed if it turns out it makes more sense to postpone it a year. Another location where we're supporting that demographic growth is at Lakeland. We requested this project last year, but we often request a lot more projects than what we get funded for, because the need is there. And so, this year, we've reprioritized so that Lakeland will fall within that anticipated $25 million that we would be allocated. And the proposal is to, they currently have a 1960s one-story modular outback that is 10 classrooms. We would replace that with a two-story, 20-classroom modular onsite and put in a new playground as well. So, that's our proposal in regards to those demographic changes. CIP requests, and this is just a really nice picture of the Frederick Douglass Auditorium, which is slated to open next summer. So, for our CIP selection process, we first carry over projects that have had multi-year funding or might have been unfunded from the prior year. We, there is a bit of a shell game, like, we have this Healthy Schools funding, like, maybe it makes sense to cover it with local funding. So, there is kind of some shifting back and forth to determine what's the appropriate pot of money that should be covering that project. If there's new projects that, or systems that have been flagged since last year, we'll go ahead and add those to the mix. We look at our annual review decisions, as well as our CE FMP, to ensure we're aligning with district priorities, and then that's our list that we move forward with. The biggest changes from FY26 CIP is that Marie GiFerran Annex, Furley, and Armistead Gardens have now been fully funded, and so, those are no longer on the list. We have added the southeast building renovation, and then we shifted the Ben Franklin and Edmondson schedules. This is a map showing our CIP project requests overlaid with our Community Conditions Index map, which is something that we use to show Baltimore with an equity lens of, in terms of historic investments. These are the FY26 Healthy Schools projects. There's only eight of them, but with costs increasing on all different systems, we've been, the number of projects we've been able to cover each year does shrink. All right. And now, we'll walk through a summary of our major projects. And we're going to be going in order of time. So, this summer, Furley, the new Furley Building opened, and also the Marie GiFerran Early Learning Annex also opened. Marie GiFerran is receiving a two-story prefab that was funded with general funds, and that's going to be opening January '26. The Northeast Middle Building receives prior funding, so they'll continue to receive funding, and that's going to be housing the Vanguard Middle Program. And that's not a full renovation necessarily, it's mostly a system, systems for, and that'll allow us to surplus the Thurgood Marshall Building, which is a lot bigger than what that program needs. We have that Lakeland two-story modular going to come online, so in order to, so that we don't have to swing any students, because they are very overcrowded and they would not be able to consolidate, we'll be building the two-story modular on the site where the playground is, demoing the old modular that you see on that left-hand side, and then building a new playground where that old modular sits. The Frederick Douglass Campus, as I mentioned, opens summer '26, and that's going to be a co-location with the separate public day school of Joseph Briscoe. Commodore John Rogers is under construction. They are swinging in that southeast building that I mentioned, and they'll be moving in January '27. Armistead Gardens is slated to open up 2027. They are, it's doing a phased onsite construction, so there's no swinging involved with that. Baltimore City College program has moved into U-Bolts. They will be there for three years, and then it'll reopen in August '28. City Springs Design is underway, and that is slated to open August 28. Commodore John Rogers is under construction. They are swinging in that southeast building that I mentioned, and they'll be moving in January '27. Armistead Gardens is slated to open up 2027. They are-- it's doing phased onsite construction, so there's no swinging involved with that. Baltimore City College program has moved into U-Bolts. They will be there for three years, and then it'll reopen in August '28. City Springs design is underway, and that is slated to open August '28. Western High School and Poly High School are in design as we speak. They will-- those programs and Frederick Douglass are all swinging at the Northwestern Building. And so once Douglas moves out next summer, Western moves in for two years, then they come home, and then Poly moves there for two years. So Western will be opening summer '28, Poly opens summer 2030. Southeast Building is a multi-year-- multiple years of funding, and so the finish date and when all that construction would occur would be August 31. However, a lot of those are systems projects that we will be able to do with students onsite. And so, again, the hope is that a new school can open summer '27 or summer '28. Ben Franklin, we adjusted the schedule from what we had previously. Again, this is influx as we continue to look at numbers. But right now, it is slated to be-- have their two-story modular addition come online 2030, and then the renovations that we're planning would occur summer '33. Edmondson High School, it currently is in design for the CTE spaces to be designed within the main building. For those who aren't aware, it's a two-building campus across-- I want to say-- it's near in the uplands. I think-- I want to say Atherton's, not right. Maybe it is. Anyways, it's separated by a road, and so us designing the CTE spaces to fit within the main building will allow them to consolidate to be a single-building campus, which is a lot better than a two-building campus. And so we're-- that consolidation's going to occur summer '28, and then the additional renovations that we have planned would be finished '33. All right, and so looking forward, this is a summary of our CIP requests for the state, and then I have one for local as well. So you can see here, we-- the expected funding, we're having a placeholder of 25 million. If we get more than that, great, but right now, we just need to make sure we have a realistic goal to be working within, even though we will be presenting our proposal to the state of-- that exceeds the 25 million significantly because the need is there. And so that's why you see the systemic projects specifically at 58.3. This is our proposal for the local funding we'll be receiving. It covers some of those same projects that we saw on the previous slide. All right, so just in summary, we'll be requesting 83 million from the state. It'll be more like 25, but we are requesting 83. There's the 27.5 from city CIP funds, and then there's a city Built to Learn match. And so that still is outstanding, and that's at 14.3 million. And then, as always, if folks have questions or they want to dig into our demographics or some of the building data points that we've discussed, we have a really great hub page with several dashboards, and you should definitely check it out.
Thanks. I still have a couple of questions, and I promise not to ask all of these questions again next year, but I just need to--
Yeah.
Can you go back a slide? And I just-- I'm trying, on one hand, not to get out of our lane, so to speak, but, you know, we are focused on growth, on physical development, on all of those things, and we don't want to be the school board or BCPS capital staff, but these things are all interrelated, right? And so I'm just trying to understand some of that stuff through that-- through this discussion. The-- is the city CIP funds mathematically related to the state CIP funds? Is there any requirement, or is it purely, you know, a negotiation of what you request and you have to lobby for it? I just don't know the process by which you ultimately end up with the amount of state CIP and city CIP that's in your six-year budget.
So the city CIP, historically, we were receiving 19 million. I know there were, I think, several advocates, I think at the city council level, who helped push for the increased amounts. It wasn't necessarily us coming to city council saying, "We need 27.5, we need 30." So that happens at the city council level. That wasn't necessarily any negotiations with the state. The state does have certain-- it's called a cost-share allocation, and so basically the state says, "We're going to cover 94% of your CIP projects," but then local money has to kick in a certain percentage. And so historically, when we received the 19 million, we were using that 19 million. It was for specific projects, but it was kind of for that requirement from the state. From the state side, they set that amount. They get an overall pot of money for the CIP for the state, and then they determine the IAC, the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction, they set the percentages that each LEA, each county receives. And so we have been advocating for many, many years, we have, Baltimore City has, for increased funding. So that is always an ongoing conversation. We were able to get permission to raise the funds for the 21st Century Buildings Program, which is, I think we have-- the last ones are going to be Frederick Douglass and Commodore. The-- I think a lot of the advocacy that has occurred did result in the Built to Learn, which was associated with the current plan. But again, those are one-time funding sources, and it's not the recurring funding.
And the Bridge Learn Funds, how does that--
The what?
The BTL--
Built to Learn.
Built to Learn, sorry, funds. How does that interact with all this?
So Baltimore City Schools rolled out what we call the High School Plan, and so that we decided to use the Built to Learn Funds towards some of our high schools. And high schools are massive, and they have a lot more going on, if you think about the CTE programs and just kind of the sophistication of the technology and the needs. They tend to be pretty expensive. And so some of the schools that we chose for our Built to Learn allocation, they're the most expensive schools in the district, and we wouldn't have never had enough money from the CIP to be able to replace them. And so those resulted in Poly Western and City College, as well as a small portion went to City Springs.
Gotcha. And this may be a question more for Nelson, I'm not sure, than for you, but could you just go back and just sort of describe briefly the-- this sort of misalignment between the city CIP cycle and the BCPS CIP, and why this comes to us, and it's kind of in a separate way? I just don't-- I'm just trying to understand how it fits in to the CIP conversation that we have every year, we're about to start that process again. And I think, Nelson, you mentioned it at the beginning, but either of you, if you can--
Yeah.
--would be great.
So the way the state CIP works is we need a letter of support from our local planning authority, and we have to submit our-- our first submission occurs basically the first week of October every single year. That's set in stone. And then there's an amendment process that occurs at the end of November. And then, as the state figures out the budget for FY '27, that occurs throughout the spring. And so typically, we know the final amount that we will be getting in like late April, early May. And so it's this weird, multi-month timeline that we have to fit in from the state side. And then-- so we do need that letter of support to be able to move our stuff forward, even though their process takes multiple months.
So does this effectively mean, and maybe this is again a city staff question, that this approval bakes in the BCPS line in our CIP as we continue to develop it? Is that sort of an advance determination of the BCPS CIP?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Yes, that is correct.
Oh. Oh my gosh, Sarah from-- I recognize your voice, but I didn't see her. Okay.
Sorry, I'm not there in person. I'm feeling under the weather. But yeah, Sarah Parnellum, Planning Department. So yes, this is out of sequence from the process for the other agencies due to the interaction with the state's process. And so as the commission approves this now, this is what will be reflected for schools when you see the entire package of the capital budget in February and March of next year. So you'll see the same-- the same projects with the same dollar amounts for the local portion that you're seeing now for city schools.
Thanks, very much.
And just if I can go back to your question about the increase in the city CIP funds over years, that's really a reflection of the increase of the total general obligation bonds. And so the planning commission will be hearing the loan authorization at your next meeting, and so you'll see kind of the history of the increase in the loan authorization. And so as the total amount has increased, the amount for city schools has increased.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Thanks for pitching in from afar. Are there other commissioner questions? Mr. Horn?
Just have a quick question about looking forward. And in your slide, you talk about sort of, you know, this current landscape and the challenge of 407 million less than what's needed. And I didn't know whether or not you've done a study or some type of thought process within the school system about P3s, public-private partnerships, as a way to finance and construct schools. I know there is an example, isn't an example in Baltimore City or Baltimore County, but PG County has done that well. And so I didn't know if that was a conversation, if there's been a study, or sort of if you can just talk about that as an innovative and creative way.
Yeah, so, yes, that has occurred. There was definitely an example of that that we looked at in DC. And so I think it was about two or three years ago, we looked at several sites that we thought might be an opportunity to proceed with some kind of RFP to be able to maximize the site's potential. We have since moved forward, and we actually have-- we've revamped it. It's no longer an RFP, we're calling it a CFP, a Call for Proposals. And that's occurring at the Canton Middle Site. So that-- I think the deadline is done for that. We received some really strong proposals. Our next steps are reviewing it internally, and then we'll be convening a review panel to review the proposals, of which includes-- Chris Reyer was previously included, so now we'll be including Tim. And then also Lauren Chizik from CHAP. And then also from the city, we are looking to get someone from BDC who's familiar with tax credits. So we're looking to redevelop that site. The goal is that city schools would not be putting forth any money, that it kind of pays for itself, and that we also get an educational component out of it. So that is currently underway. The other site where the city-- we are actually working with the Department of Housing on is in Cherry Hill, at the old South Side Building. It's two buildings, it's Dr. Carter G. Woodson and South Side. New Era used to be at South Side. And so that call for proposals, we-- there was a period it was open, we've received proposals, and so we're figuring out next steps for that site as well.
It'd be great if you can just include that and some additional information to the commission. I would like to just learn a little bit more about what you're doing with P3.
Yep, yep.
Other commissioner questions? Hearing none? Okay. Is there a motion to approve this FY '27 request for city schools? Well, you have something you want to say on the subject?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you come on up and--
Yes, my name is Ronald Miles. I guess we call myself a community activist servant, and I've been working in the Perkins Somerset Old Town Project area for a number of years now, about nine. And this may be the place or not, but I was looking at the coordination with the Department of Recreation and Parks, as well as Department of Education. We all know that the-- in that particular area, the Chick Web Center now is being developed at $20 million. And then you had the old Somerset Site right across the street, and then you had the old Somerset Extension. So it's a lot of development in Perkins Somerset. Now, the issue is, and I've been speaking about it for a number of years now, is right across from where you have this-- all this development, the National Academy Foundation parking lot is in deployable condition, and it doesn't seem to be part of the redevelopment of the area. It's just a parking lot. I believe the Department of Rec have included some spaces for off-street parking, and that's being developed now, being constructed now. But when I look at the overall parking lot of the National Academy Foundation, it's in pathetic condition. And even now, right there in that small area, the former Dunbar High School has been put on the National Historic Landmark. So right in that little hub right there, you're going to have a parking lot, seems to be minor, but I think it's major, that that should be coordinated with other departments in regard to the full development of the area. That parking lot is in pathetic condition, and it doesn't seem that there's going to be any recourse in having that done. That's all I ask about.
Is this parking lot a Baltimore City Public Schools parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
It's part of-- The National Academy Foundation.
The original Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School building that's now housing National Academy Foundation Charter School. But our parking lot, I don't recall parking lots ever been approached as a systemic project.
I could speak.
Thank you, sir.
So yes, that's the parking lot with the Thomas G. Hayes Building, and parking lots are frequently under the threshold that we would submit for a CIP project. With our CIP projects, we do mostly the major projects, yeah. So that would be, if there was a maintenance complaint, we can definitely flag that for our team and see where it can--
Yeah.
Even if we can't afford to repave it at this point in time, like look at some of the weeds.
Yeah, I did not mean to skip over public comment, so I apologize, but gentleman raises a question. Obviously, it's not directly related to the CIP. But one of the reasons we have these forums is for people to raise questions. So it would be great if perhaps maybe when you're done with your item, if you could just chat with the gentleman and give him some direction about how to register his concern and, you know, how it could get in whatever queue exists to be evaluated and potentially repaired.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Thank you. I'm sorry, is there anybody else here who wishes to speak specifically on the question of the schools CIP request? Okay. Also, our return to the commission, is there a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, and we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Tiso, will you handle the roll call for us, please?
Yes, sir. Robin Allen?
Approve.
Councilman Bullock?
Approve.
Christine Griffin?
Approve.
Talib Horn?
Approve.
Claudia Jeline?
Approve.
Doug McCouch?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Williams?
Approve.
Eric Stevenson?
Approve.
John Larriam?
Approve.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Okay, Mr. Executive Secretary, would you please call us the next item?
Next, we have Caitlin Audette from the Department of Planning Staff, who will present Downtown RISE Master Plan for adoption.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Caitlin Audette to present the Downtown RISE Master Plan. I'll go through the first page before the slides are up, because it's not necessary. The petitioner here is the mayor's office in downtown partnership, in partnership with the Department of Planning. This was within the Downtown Planning District, and I am Caitlin Audette. I'm also the community planner for downtown.
Ms. Audette, I'll take you off the hook while you're waiting for your slides, just to say, and you might say this, but I'll just be sure. Those who might have been here, would be six weeks ago, two meetings ago, heard a preliminary presentation of the Downtown RISE Plan by Ms. Audette and by others. We asked, and we're going to ask from time to time, for things that need some deliberation about which we might have questions before we approve them, et cetera, to have a presentation and then have a pause and have folks return to re-present and for there to be a vote. So this is the second chapter in that, the second time. I know we asked some questions. I know if you've seen the staff report, you'll see that there were some questions that were asked, the staff is responding. So this is essentially a present-- a final presentation of the Downtown RISE Master Plan, and today it is before us for a vote and adoption. So context.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. And I've already done the first slide, so this plan is intended to be a living document and framework that can be updated as additional studies are completed. The plan co-locates information from a variety of existing plans and other sources. And it also is in keeping with the 2024 Comprehensive Master Plan, which included a section on area focus plans, and one of those was focused on downtown. This portion was developed alongside Downtown RISE 10-year Master Plan, and the information in the comprehensive plan is mirrored in the RISE document. As stated, this is intended to be a living document, and we consulted many other plans that cover or touch the same area. And so here's a list--
same area. And so here's a list of the downtown area plans that, you know, are hopefully co-located within this Downtown Rise document. Additionally, we included information from citywide plans that was relevant to the downtown core, which included these plans. So per the city charter, the Baltimore City Planning Commission is responsible for preparing and updating plans showing the physical development of the city. Generally, city-managed plans that go through the Planning Commission are citywide plans. So though not a citywide plan, Downtown Rise Master Plan was completed by multiple agencies for the city's downtown, and its adoption by the Planning Commission as a city-managed plan is appropriate for the central area of the city that is utilized by both city residents and visitors. City-managed plans need to include significant outreach and collaboration, and at least one public meeting and a comment period. So the comment period began on August 15th with the advertising of the August 28th Planning Commission hearing, and multiple public meetings have been held. And I'll go into detail on that timeline in a few slides. So now I'm going to go through some highlights from the plan. This will include information similar to what was presented on August 28th. First off, I'll talk about Downtown Rise in general. So the master plan, which is under review today, is the long-term portion of Downtown Rise. There's also the Strategic Action Plan, which is an ongoing and addresses near-term efforts downtown. And that is updated quarterly. There's a website where you can look at all of the tasks that are under that, and encourage you all to take, to check that out if you're interested. So the, the master plan is a culmination of deep collaboration, initially beginning with the Maryland Stadium Authority and growing to include the many stakeholders shown here, as well as others that are not pictured. As a collaborative effort, the plan was completed in conjunction with, conjunction with other related efforts, including the Strategic Action Plan, which I just discussed, the Comprehensive Plan, Baltimore Together, and the Greater Baltimore Committee's 10-Year Strategies. So these all were aligned, they support one another with the same goal of creating the Baltimore city we all want to live in. This timeline, I'm just going to go through kind of a timeline of where we came from and how we got to where we are. So in 2022, the Urban Land Institute, or ULI, completed a technical assistance panel that shared the critical need to connect downtown assets. Then in the fall of 2023, so following that study, in the fall of 2023, work began toward the Strategic Action Plan. Then in 2024, the Department of Planning, in partnership with AIA Baltimore, held a day-long charrette with stakeholders, including professionals and residents. And the outcome of this event was shared at a public event immediately following. And then in the months that followed that, planning staff shared the outcomes of that charrette with both the Planning Commission and UDAP, the Urban Design and Architecture Advisory Panel, to receive feedback and update the content. Then in May of 2024, the 10-year vision for Rise was released, and that started the public conversation about a plan for downtown. Several public events were held following that in both July and September. And then in December of 2024, the city comprehensive plan was adopted by the mayor and city council. And then more recently, in August, on August 20th, there was a public meeting in Downtown Partnership to share and solicit feedback. And then at the August 28th Planning Commission hearing, we again asked for feedback from both the commissioners and the general public. So what does the plan do? Its intent is to make downtown Baltimore a more livable city that promotes equity, opportunity, and quality of life. This includes safe streets, accessible and affordable housing, high-quality services, and access to meaningful employment. The 10-year plan seeks to maintain Baltimore as the economic engine of the state, taking advantage of the location along the East Coast and capitalizing on ongoing investments downtown. It also needs to create a downtown that is safe and comfortable for everyone. This happens by prioritizing multimodal investment and making sure that all of the investments meet the Complete Streets Manual. Additionally, we need to make, to make movement between assets intuitive and enjoyable for everyone. So downtown streets have character. By aligning the streets with categories in the Complete Streets Manual, investments and priorities can be targeted and enhanced. So specific streets have been labeled as either neighborhood streets, place-defining streets, people mover streets, or cultural connectors. That way, as investments are completed, we know how to address them. These various, you know, street typologies address the different types of character for the various streets we have downtown, right? Some need to be places where people can move on a bus, in a car, and on foot. Others need to be the space that identify a city, right? Something that you think of as a picture-perfect moment. So neighborhood streets are these smaller tree-lined pedestrian-oriented pathways where you might, you know, eat outside and enjoy, enjoy downtown Baltimore. These are streets like Redwood Street, Water Street, Liberty Street. And, you know, here's a rendering of what it could look like. Cultural connector streets are pathways between anchors and nodes of activity. These are more artistic and whimsical, and they connect, you know, Utah Street is a great example, connecting Camden Yards to the Hippodrome to Lexington Market. People mover streets prioritize moving people efficiently. So that, like I said, both vehicles, buses, bikes, all, all the different ways that people can move through downtown, these streets are prioritizing moving them quickly. And then place-defining streets. These are grand, these are recognizable locations in downtown, and really, you know, thinking about the waterfront and Pratt Street. The plan ends with a table of additional opportunities or tactics that can be utilized to further the efforts of the plan. And these range from small-scale to massive infrastructure investments. Many were pooled from other plans that already exist. And these have been divided along the four pillars of the plan, which include economic development, infrastructure, public safety, and arts and culture. So I'm not going to go through these in detail, but I am going to go through some of the comments that we've been, that we've received over the past couple months. So you can, you can understand, you know, what a tactic kind of looks like. We have listed in bold if it's underway or not, and you can see, you know, kind of what category it falls under with the icon underneath the relevant pillar. So here's some additional ones. Okay. So as stated previously, and as the timeline shows, a variety of outreach meetings have been held since 2023, meeting, meeting the requirements for plan adoption. There's also been a public comment period, beginning with the advertisement for the August 28th Planning Commission meeting. The, the slides that follow are going to be, go through the comments that were received from the public and what changes have been made to the plan to respond to those comments. These also include comments received from elected officials and members of the Planning Commission at the August 28th hearing. The table includes actions that were taken by staff to address each comment. Some comments were difficult to include a response to today, but they have value and they should be integrated into the document at a later date. Staff recommends the plan be updated either annually or biannually to address these comments, which need further outreach prior to inclusion. And regular updates will also allow staff to provide status updates to interested parties and keep implementation in the public eye. So first two comments, or many of the comments that we received were from community stakeholders in Mount Vernon and areas directly north of the downtown core. These included a request to call out Charles Street on this overall map of assets, and to include the Streets Market, the only large-scale grocery store downtown, as a community asset. And both of these actions have been completed, so the map has been updated to reflect those requests. Other notes included updates to this map, which did not extend north and, or include Charles Street more as, as they thought it should. So this was completed. We expanded the public realm enhancement as well as kind of these other proposed trees plantings, that kind of thing, a little further north. But with the understanding that this map is intended for the downtown core, not intended to ignore the other areas of downtown necessarily. So I think this is kind of a, a conversation that needs to continue as this document continues to, to, you know, evolve. And I don't expect you guys to read all these, but I kind of wanted to share that the comments fall in buckets. So a group of comments included really great suggestions. They align with the general theme of the document, but they need additional outreach and study, and could be included in a future update of the plan. So these included a set speed limit along St. Paul, 20 miles per hour, the return of Charles and St. Paul Street to two-way traffic. We know that some of these have been talked about a lot. They've been studied ad nauseam, but they weren't part of the initial outreach, and it would seem inappropriate to put them in at this point. There we go. The next group of comments was easier to respond to, as these were more technical requests, or they were already included in the document. So there was typos and errors, a request to reformat the document for ease of reading, the request to close St. Paul Street exit from I-83, which was already included, and to create a West Side Work Group similar to, to the impact investment areas to attract vacancy and redevelopment efforts on the West Side. Those were, that was added to the tactic table because it's kind of already underway. So some examples for these, the reformatting. Here's a shot the, to the left, you can see what a sample page looked like previously, and to the right is the reformat document. So hopefully, it's a little bit easier to read, and a little easier to understand where you are in the document and, and, you know, how to kind of move through the document itself. Other changes are made to the tactics table. So this was cleaned up a little bit, kind of removed some of the, we had, these were separated under goals that weren't tied to anything else in the document, so we cleared that up, removed some of the columns that weren't actively being used. And, and hopefully, it's easier to read and understand. One request at the Planning Commission's August 28th meeting was to update these street sections to be aligned with the Complete Streets Manual. What we've done, and I apologize if these are so small, what's been is we've removed the dimensions and other information that might specify too much what to expect in these areas. So these are more accurately showing the early nature of these drawings, which will need to be updated as traffic studies and engineering work is completed.
So Ms. Audette, just to be clear, because it did come up, the, the revised plan makes clear that it acknowledges the existence of and the necessary compliance with the Complete Streets Manual, correct?
Yes, yes. And then the last group of comments were detailed thoughts on the implementation of elements of the plan. And these are extremely useful as the plan moves forward, but they don't necessarily need to be an update to the plan. So I think this is something, you know, we have this table of comments that we can go back to and utilize as we continue to work in downtown. There we go. So for equity, the master plan would provide a guide for improvements in downtown that will help agencies prioritize investments within the area. These include transportation improvements, a focus on addressing vacant storefronts, and connecting downtown to adjacent communities. The plan will allow property owners and developers to better understand proposed changes and their potential impact on their property. And it'll provide clear guidance for advocacy. Over the past two years, there has been an active engagement timeline with the public, including several public meetings. And the non-voting session on August 28th will allow for further engagement, discussion. And it did, we got really great responses from folks following the August 28th meeting. And for internal operations, this will provide agencies with a clear path for priorities downtown. It will require additional work on staff, just as we continue to update it and bring it back to you all with where we are in the implementation, but that's, that's our job. For notification, the agenda was sent to the 17,000 unique emails on file, as well as over 100 individual downtown stakeholders. And it has been, also been uplifted by a number of partners. There were a handful of letters of support that were received at the August 28th Commission hearing. Additional letters were received for this meeting, and all of them were in support. Many of the ones for this meeting were, came from organizations that work in downtown. So our recommendation is approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Audette. Thank you for your very hard work on this. A lot of people have been working very hard on it, none more than you. So thank you for everything. I just want to make two quick comments and turn it over to my colleagues. So I, I made two, two comments I want to, I guess one comment I really want to call to everyone's attention, other than the one where it says Chair Larriam pointed out various typos and errors, which I guess is going to be my legacy now, but, but thank you for that. More, more seriously, one of the things that I was very concerned about, particularly in that tactics table at the end, and I was happy to see that the staff report actually says basically the same thing, which is, we need some sort of implementation accountability and some regular review of the plan. So the staff report, which I'll, I'll reference, says, a moment. Staff report says, "Staff recommend that the plan be updated either annually or biannually to easily address these comments," all the comments you've seen, "which need further outreach prior to inclusion. Regular updates will also allow staff to provide status updates to interested parties and keep implementation in the public eye." And then really sort of complemented that, my comment, which was, if you look at the, at the, the plan, the actual plan as, as presented, which is on both the Commissioners and the public WIC's site, before the tactics table, it says, "The next step is to create," this language now appears, "The next step is to create a cross-agency work group to evaluate, prioritize, and establish timeframes for implementing these tactics. Twice annual updates tracking implementation should be published and presented to the Planning Commission for discussion." There are, I think, 40 or something tactics. And what I'm really trying to do, not only here, but more broadly, is to avoid having these sort of documents and plans with things to do that, that they just disappear, as sometimes these things do. So combination of the staff recommendation, which if the commission adopts, would be included in our, in our approval, as well as the, the plan itself, which has the language that I just read, is intended to create an ongoing review and evaluation of this plan, so that it comes back here, I think twice annually, both to give us a full report on the implementation table. And it's fine if not everything gets done right away, but, you know, things have to, and it's fine if someone says it's no longer a priority. I just don't want a list of 40 things that just never gets, never gets talked about again. And then also, the staff recommendation, combined with the comments, allows the staff to take more time to look at those comments, many of which are very, very good, and to consider including them in the updates. All that said, it's very important for us to move this plan forward because it has some very fundamental priorities regarding infrastructure downtown, regarding transportation, regarding the street grid, all these things that are really sort of precedence to moving a lot of other things forward. So I'm very much in favor of approving it in the form, but I did want to add some of those things. And again, I appreciate the staff's work on it as well. Just wanted to explain also some of these other features that are in the plan as being presented today. So those are my couple of comments. Let me ask other Commissioners if you have questions for staff first. Am I right?
Thank you.
Okay. There'll still be an opportunity, if you think of one, as people, as we continue. I do want to acknowledge the letters of support in the record, which Ms. Audette mentioned, they're again available if anybody wants to review them on the, on the site. And now I'll ask if there's anybody here today who would like to speak on the subject of this plan. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Tiso, is there anybody online who wishes to speak about the plan?
Yes, we have Otis Rowley. I pushed the button. You should be able to unmute yourself from your end now. And if you're on a mobile phone, you may have to hit star six.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
We can hear you, Mr. Rowley. Go ahead.
On behalf of the Baltimore Development Corporation, I just wanted to, in overwhelming support of, of the plan, we look forward to its adoption by the Honorable Commissioner, and it's our intention to be working with the Plan Department and obviously Downtown Partnership and the City of Baltimore, to forward its, its implementation, particularly the economic development, all this stuff, if one approved by the board. So I just wanted to be on the record as stating that Baltimore Development Corporation is overwhelmingly in support of, of this plan and the, all the energy effort that went into putting it together by the, the Plan Department and Downtown Partnership and many others. So I wanted to be on the record of saying that.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. And I'll also say congratulations on your appointment as the new CEO of BDC. We've talked about, and I know you've even talked about in the short time with the director, the need to, to align BDC and the Planning Department on many, many things that are priorities for us all. So thank you for testifying today and for providing support and insight, and we look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody else online, Mr. Tiso? Okay. If there's nobody here- If there's nobody here in person or online, I'm going to close the public testimony. I'm going to once again ask if the, just one more time, if the commissioners have any questions before we proceed to vote to adopt the staff report and the plan?
No questions, but the comment, in passing instances, Sean Davis made the point, like, it's kind of anticlimactic when there's kind of not much comment and questions, but I know it's a lot of work that went into this, so I appreciate all the effort, so I wish there were more like confetti and flyers that went off, but I really appreciate the work that everyone put into making this happen.
It is definitely an important step forward for an important piece of our city agenda. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the staff report and to approve the downtown rise 10-year master plan?
So moved.
It's been moved by the vice chair, seconded by the councilman. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Tiso?
Robin Allen.
Approved.
Councilman Bullock.
Approved.
Christine Grifson.
Approved.
Talib Horn.
Approved.
Claudia Jolyn.
Approved.
Doug McCouch.
Approved.
Deputy Mayor Williams.
Approved.
Eric Stevenson.
Approved.
John Laria.
Approved. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to the next item. Mr. Executive Secretary, please.
Do you have one that's postponed?
Yeah, I just, I could just announce item six, depending on which version of the agenda you've seen or when you looked at it or printed it. Item six, which was an alley closing, has been postponed, so we're going to move directly to item seven.
And Justin Walker from the Department of Planning will present this item, City Council Bill Number 250089, zoning, a rezoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling to two-dwelling units in the R7 zoning district. This is at 1029 West 37th Street. Dustin?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, Justin Walker, DOP, here on Council Bill 250089. As we're all used to, I don't know that a planning commission goes by without a residential conversion. This bill's a little different in that it will include a rezone in addition to the conversion in a single bill. So again, this is located at 1029 West 37th Street. It is a request to rezone the property from the R6 to the R7 zoning district and allow for a residential conversion from a single-family to two-dwelling units. Currently in the R6 zoning district, residential conversions are not permitted, so that is why there is the necessity for the rezone, as well as the approval of the conditional use for the conversion. Petitioners, Allison Crowley. This is in the Northern Planning District, which is Ms. Marie Anderson's district as the community planner. So just to get ourselves oriented, this is in the Hampden neighborhood. We can see it on the map shown. Take a quick look at the plat. It is in end unit. It is a bit unique from the rest of the block as the structure has full lot coverage, and it is currently in the R6 zoning district shown on the screen.
Ms. Rowley, just go back for a second. I just want to make sure I understand. So I don't know what's to the left, but I'm seeing a piece of property in an R6 zone that's being proposed first to be rezoned to R7, and then, once R7 goes through a more familiar process, which is the conditional use for conversion, correct?
That is correct. The Law Department and Legislative Reference decided this could be included in one bill for both requests.
Do you have any, do you know what's to the left? Is it more R6? It looks like it is.
I have a more zoomed-out map. This is just what was included in the bill, so we'll look at a map that'll show up.
Great. Thank you very much.
A more holistic picture of the surrounding zoning. So again, there's the plat. Going to an aerial view of the site, again, you can show, see the corner unit with the full lot coverage, and there is a look, looking south from West 37th Street, and this property, the two-dwelling units would be contained in the structure that appears as a row house towards the front of the lot. This is a mixed-use building as the small structure in the, what would be the rear yard is currently a restaurant. Under the definition of the code, because there's only a single dwelling unit, even though it is a mixed-use structure, this is still classified as a single-family dwelling and therefore must go through this conversion process.
But what's the zoning status of the restaurant in this district?
It is a non-conforming use. It would be able to be reauthorized if that was extinguished through a neighborhood commercial establishment, which would be a conditional use by the BMZA.
But, but it was a lawfully established use at some time and now remains legal non-conforming? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, the summary of the requests of this bill, we've mostly run through, but this would change the zoning district from R6 to R7. In order to do that, the code requirements of Section 5-508 have to be met, which we will explore momentarily, and those are pulled from the state land use articles, and then following that, the permission of the conversion, again, that we are more familiar with per Section 9701 of the zoning code. So here we have that more zoomed-out view that I had recently mentioned. This is just two, two blocks to the north of West 36th Street, known as the Avenue, which is of course a commercial district. Again, further to the west side, the R6 zoning continues for about a block before reaching the C1 commercial corridor to the west there. And again, this would, you can see there is one larger structure that retained the R7 zoning, but what is important to note is the current R6 zone was R7 prior to transform Baltimore in 2017. So when the comprehensive rezoning was carried out in 2017, this entire area was down zoned from the R7 to the R6 where it stands today.
Although, I mean, you can't, R7 and R6 in those two different codes are not exactly the same thing, right?
So they are not, the most critical component would be that a residential conversion is allowed in R7, but not in R6, which was the standard of the code at the time as well.
Gotcha. Okay. That's a good point. Thank you.
So that was known when, when the comprehensive rezoning was undertaken. So that brings us to Section 5508, which is the required findings for a rezoning. And as we can see on their, Section 1 there, there are two findings that the legislator or city council must make to approve a non-comprehensive rezoning, and that is one, that there's been a substantial change to the character of the neighborhood where the property is located, or that there was a mistake in arriving at the existing zoning classification. Staff found no reason why, to believe that the current zoning is, was made an error, so therefore that leaves us with the substantial change in the character of the neighborhood. And also, we have difficulty and we're not able to find that that standard was met under Section 2 here, the required findings. The changes in population have been minimal, such as showing about a difference of 300 people over five years from 18 to 23. The availability of public facilities has not substantially changed. There's been no major transportation projects or changes in vehicular or public transportation traffic that staff was able to find. So again, the standards of either a substantial change or mistake were not able to be met from staff's findings. So that would then move us on to the conditional use standards, and of course, as mentioned, a residential conversion is not allowed in, or not permitted under the current code in the R6 zoning district. So looking at the approval standards of 5406 of the zoning code, at number 12, that all applicable standards and requirements of this code are met, has not been met for the conditional use as the residential conversion is not approvable in R6. So just running through the equity, there's, of course, the concern that, obviously in 2017, under the comprehensive rezoning process, there was significant public outreach conducted, neighborhood involvement with the community and other organizations that arrived them at their current R6 zoning, and this would overturn that for a single parcel to, again, the effect would be to just add one dwelling unit, but the standards required for a rezone do not appear to be met. As far as notification, the required posting for 10 days when the property was posted and met, and the staff sent out notice of this action via the Gov Delivery Service, and because staff was not able to find a substantial change or a mistake in the current zoning classification, the recommendation is for disapproval.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
I have a few, but let me defer first. Are there questions for staff? Anybody? Questions? So, Mr. Walker, your, it's sort of interesting. I mean, I have to agree that it's hard to see a basis for rezoning from R6 to R7 under these circumstances and under applicable law. I don't know how much flexibility anybody has in that regard, but it is interesting that your conditional use analysis, essentially, other for the, other than the fact that it says, under the standard, for example, doesn't conflict with applicable law, because it conflicts because it's an R6, but the more subjective assessments seem like, if this were R7, you would be able to support the conditional use. Is that?
That is generally correct. The standards of conditional use really boil down to, would this be more impactful at this specific site than another similarly zoned site? Things like accessibility of light and air, accessibility of emergency services, we don't anticipate would be significantly impacted. So if this was in an R7 zoning and was a simple conditional use, it would be likely to have an approval recommendation.
And oftentimes we'll see, not so much rezoning, but we'll see a condition use in variance. No variance required here because of someone, underlying?
So typically, the variances we see for conversions are in regard to lot size. This lot has what is required for two-dwelling units.
So it just happens not to need a variance?
Yes.
It would need, it would need a conditional use under the ordinance if it were R7, and according to your staff report, it looks like it might well qualify for conditional use, but the sort of top line is, it's in R6 district, and the question is, can it be, should it properly be rezoned to an R7 district?
Absolutely. We, we would have to get through the rezoning standards of change or mistake before the conditional use standards could be applicable. And also the, the, we should note that what we will hear later on today, the housing bill would amend the 9701 of the zoning code that prohibits residential conversion in the R6 zoning district.
And this is asking for two, two units? Forgive me, two units?
Two units, yes.
So if, if we were to change the law, as is proposed in the bill later today, to permit two or more units in any, I think the bill says it's basically in any district.
Yes.
Then we wouldn't be having this discussion about rezoning or conditional use. Is that correct?
And from my understanding, residential conversions could happen over the counter and would no longer need to come through the planning commission and ordinance process.
Okay. All right. Thank you for all that. Mr. Tiso, do you want to add anything as the, the sort of partner guru on this issue?
Sorry if my stage whispers were not quiet enough. No, he's, he's hitting some of the talking points that you'll hear me touch on later. I mean, if that housing bill gets approved, then this becomes a allowable use over the counter. So, you know, but for the R6 zoning here, and I'll highlight that during the comprehensive rezoning of the city, some neighborhoods were moved one notch lower to R6 for the specific reason to not allow conversions of dwellings. That might not be a preferable policy from our perspective, especially if the bulking yard sizes are appropriate for a higher-density category, but that's what there is, and that's what we have to react to.
Okay. So I was going to ask, is the applicant here or represented here today?
I believe the applicant is joining us online.
I had one question.
Let's do that first.
Justin or Eric? I know there's been an opinion from planning staff, maybe Martin French from before, when there's multiple uses on the parcel, that it doesn't matter. So my argument, if I were their lawyer, and what I'm inclined to make for them, is that there's already a tavern, so it's not really a single-family dwelling, it's already been multiple uses on the parcel. It's already been converted to a mixed-use property and therefore should just be able to add another unit. So do you have a history of what we've done there?
That certainly is an argument, that the BMZA actually has decided this a few times, something similar has come before them, and they've ruled that that requires a conditional use approval by ordinance. Currently, as the code's written, you could have one apartment over a Walmart, and that would be a single-family.
Well, I don't know, only if the code's written that way, but I acknowledge, but do you, do you have recollection, did the planning staff take that same position versus the BMZA opining?
So we certainly didn't object to it, and because they were all referred as conversions, I guess the zoning administrator did not consider that or did not agree with it, were just kind of the intermediaries. So, you know, what's a single-family dwelling? Part of the problem is historically, these commercial uses that have been located on our corner, mostly corner properties in our R7, R8 districts, were non-conforming. We fixed that problem when we did the comprehensive rezoning, making them neighborhood commercial establishments, they wouldn't have that stigma of non-conformity over them. It now just becomes an existing authorized conditional use. So in a more liberal interpretation, it wouldn't be just a single-family dwelling, it would be a mixed-use property, but how does one parse that out of a conversion of a single-family dwelling when that's one of the, the uses on the property? So we can work with the zoning administrator to, to get a formal opinion on that.
I mean, I guess the counterargument would be that it is still the conversion of a one-unit building to a two-unit building, regardless of whether it also happens to have a commercial use. It's a, you know, it's a question of the intent versus the potential interpretation.
Here it's a little different, but in other cases where it's been in the same building, they still made this, I know the BMZA has taken the same position, which I disagree with, but I, that's something, maybe for the applicant to consider to, if we deny.
And in part, because the language for conversions in the code, more or less, and you know, again, I'll touch on this in my staff report later, was more or less kept wholesale from the prior code to this code, but then the neighborhood commercial establishments were added to it. There was no guidance language affecting it, so we understand the quandary.
Okay. You said the applicant was online. Could you introduce the applicant to us, please?
Yes, Allison, I've unmuted you from my end. You can unmute from your end and be heard. If you're calling from a phone, you may have to hit star six to unmute yourself from your end.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yep, there we go. Go ahead.
Very beautiful. Thank you. Yeah, I just would like to, and it seems like it's been corrected already, but it's not a restaurant attached to the building. It is, it's a tavern, which has just proven a challenge over time. The, the row house itself has been unoccupied for the last 20 to 30 years because it's, if the person who, you know, is running the actual tavern doesn't live there, it's not necessarily an attractive location for a family with, say, like children. Not that it's a rowdy place, but not everybody wants to live above a bar. But yeah, I'm happy to answer any, any questions or provide any information necessary.
I'm sorry. Say the applicant's name for me. It's, Ms. Crowley, this is John Laria. I just want to make sure that you appreciate what the staff's report is saying and why it's saying it before we just, you know, plow ahead. Do you understand the concern that's being expressed regarding the zoning? I mean, it's a bit, it's a bit technical admittedly, but the sort of barriers to rezoning from R6 to R7, which is a necessary first step to get you then the conditional use that you need.
Yes, thank you. I believe I do understand that it's, it potentially sets a dangerous precedent, although, and I can appreciate the complexity of this particular issue. All that being said, and I may be a little ignorant about this, but it, to me, it sounds like, it sounds like the reason, the one reason against potentially making this change is because the code said so, and not necessarily because it is a safety issue or an issue with the neighborhood, or, or would even impact the neighborhood in any way.
Yeah, I think that is right, but just a code issue is still a pretty big issue.
Understood. Definitely appreciate it.
I'm just, I mean, and the reason I pointed out the conditional use analysis is because I think you're right, that potentially in an R7, if this were an R7 zone, and you don't need a variance... a variance, which is a little bit unusual, because oftentimes you do need a variance as well, but you only need a conditional use that, you know, the staff report sort of signals that you would probably recommend in favor of it. The problem is, it is in fact an R6 zone, and I think we have to take seriously the fact that in the last comprehensive rezoning, especially with the added color from Mr. Tiso, there was a deliberate attempt to go from R7 to R6 for the purpose of eliminating the possibility of conversion. So to go back seems potentially contrary to both the legislative intent, as well as we are struggling with, and we always struggle with, this quirky provision of Maryland law about the very narrow basis upon which you can rezone. So I just, I think it will be difficult for us, and I'll just say now, since I have the floor, I don't think I could support the rezoning. I'd be happy to support the conditional use, frankly, if it was an R7 zone already. I also would say that, you know, I don't know where you stand on the other bill that's pending, which is going to be the topic of discussion later today, but certainly, that would yield a very significant citywide change that would clear the way for this, among many other things. And I don't know if you have an interest in that or engaged in that discussion, but that's sort of another route. It's a much more macro route, not a micro route, to a resolution. But I just want to make sure that you understand, because it is a sort of technical thing, and I just don't know what your expertise is, and I don't want you to feel like we're just kind of making this up. It's a legitimate legal issue for us.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. And also, the, what is it, number nine, the last bill on the agenda today? I just learned about it yesterday, and I'm definitely very interested.
Okay. Well, there will be opportunities for you to be involved in that, because that's really, today's hearing on that is really just starting that conversation. Anyway, so are there questions from the commission for the applicant? Okay. Is there anybody else here who wishes to testify either for or against the bill? Seeing none in the audience, anybody online? Mr. Tiso?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, obviously, I did not...
Your name for the record?
There we go. Okay. Hi, my name is Will Fetter. I was here originally to testify about the bill coming up. This is related. I just thought I'd share my experience. Like, I'm actually looking for, like, basically this type of housing in this specific area, and this is like the most affordable type. It's usually those kind of conversions where you have, like, one floor is its own unit. So I would live above a tavern. So I just wanted to, like, you usually don't hear from, like, somebody who is, like, actually saying that, so I just wanted to, yeah, put that in there with regards to the stuff involving, like, conditional use versus variance, like, what kind of sequence that needs to go in. I don't care. Whatever makes that work is fine. And yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you, sir. I don't see anybody else in the audience. Again, just okay. And you said you have someone else online, Mr. Tiso?
Yes, sir. We have two online. We'll go to Gregory DeFranco first. You should be able to unmute yourself from your end. All right, Gregory, I'll need to unmute from your side before we can hear you.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. My name is Gregory DeFranco. I work with TRA Construction. I've been doing the renovation on this property with Allison, and we've been working together on this for quite some time. I just want to have some input on the earlier question of should this have, was this mistakenly converted to R6? And when I look back at the history of this building, I believe that the previous owner has owned it for several decades. As Allison said, you know, once the last owner moved out of the property and they were no longer living above the tavern with their family, it's been vacant. And, you know, the bar owner got older, and I believe they first listed this off for sale in about 2015 or 2016. I mean, it was for sale for quite a while. And so it may have been missed when this got rezoned to R6, that the owner didn't necessarily have an interest in what the zoning was, because they were, you know, at the end of, you know, they were getting ready to retire. But I do feel like if this had occurred and it had been a different bar owner, when that building became vacant, they would have converted it to multifamily use decades ago. And so it likely would have been converted decades ago. And when they converted this to R6, they should have considered that this was a vacant house, and what is the best use of this space, and how, was it historically used, and how was it going to be used in the future? So I would argue that it was mistakenly converted to R6 and should have remained R7. If you look around the entire district, you know, this is part of, you know, this is part of Hampden. This is where Hampden locals go. You know, it is part of the 36th Street, you know, 36th Street District. If you're going to Bluebird, you're also going up to Mel's Tavern. If you're going Neppenth, you're also going over to Mel's Tavern. And so I think that that should very much be considered.
Thank you, sir. I just want to say, and I don't mean to go, you know, get into the weeds here unnecessarily, but I just don't want people to, I want people to appreciate how unfortunately complex and technical it is, because the standard for mistake is not what ordinary people think the standard for mistake is. It's not, did they make a mistake? It's, were they relying at the time on some sort of mistake in the law, mistake of fact, meaning they just did not know something that if they had known it, perhaps, it might have led to a different result. It's not, were they simply mistaken? And moreover, there's no way to rewind the tape on this anyway, in the sense that we don't really know what happened, but we see a large swath of the property of the area rezoned from R7 to R6, and we just have to accept what the city council did and act accordingly. So I understand what you're saying, and while that might be in fact true, you know, in terms of like what actually may have happened, I just don't know that that's something we can take into account. So I'm just trying to be responsive to your concern, rather than just, you know, say thanks for your testimony.
Thank you. And I appreciate that clarification. I think what I really want to stress is, you know, the decision that was made in 2017, Hampden was a different place in 2017. It's a different place than it is in 2025. I'm sure it was a different place 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago. But restricting the usability of this, of this building, especially as the gentleman who just testified stated, you know, he would live in a, you know, in an apartment above, an affordable apartment above a tavern, whereas I don't know if anybody's been looking for housing in Hampden. It's very expensive, especially if you're only looking for a one- or two-bedroom. But me, I have two young children. I would not live above a tavern, even if it meant I got to live in Hampden. And, you know, I think that we should not limit ourselves to decisions that were made in 2017, when we're thinking about progress and how we're, you know, best utilizing spaces in our communities. And it would be better utilized as a multifamily than it would be utilized as a vacant property as it had been for 30 years.
Well, without taking a position on it, I would just direct you to the upcoming discussion regarding single-family zoning and the legislation that's pending. But let's move on from that. We have another person ready to testify?
We do. Only a single initial B. I have unmuted you from our end. You'll need to unmute from your end to be heard. If you can introduce yourself when you do.
Hi. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Bree Payne. I split my time between residents on 37th and another one closer to Bolton Hill. And I just am basically reiterating what the last two folks have said. I don't understand how having this building sit vacant is in any way, shape, or form a contribution to the neighborhood and the growth potential there. They've, I've watched the work that's been done. I've inquired about the space personally. I've had others who asked about it as well. And I know that there's, like, I truly am not familiar with all of the law, obviously, but everything that was laid out by the gentleman at the podium, it seems counterintuitive, proving all of these reasons that this would impact in like a grand scheme, like grand way, makes no sense to me when it's offering affordable housing in a neighborhood that is quickly becoming very restrictive, especially from a price standpoint. And there are multiple multi-unit buildings all around. So I just don't understand why this can't be one of them. The bar there is bringing business in, so having a usable space connected to it only makes more sense in my mind. And I'm, you know, as a, like, as a person who spends a bunch of time there, I'm all for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tiso, anybody else? Okay. Again, any other questions from the commission for the applicant or for staff? Okay. So the recommendation of the staff is disapproval for all the reasons that we have discussed. Is there a motion from a member of the commission, please?
Comments, Chairman, if you don't mind?
Sure, yeah.
Just a little deliberation between the commissioners. I think I'm a little annoyed with this one, just because it's going to be very obvious that I'm supporting the bill that we're going to be talking about soon. This is exactly the reason why, right? It's, I hear everybody's arguments on why they would like this to be approved, but we, our hands are tied, given that the required findings are no change in character, and it's not a mistake in zoning. There's nothing else we can do. And so that's why I just wanted to say that to the other commissioners, it's how I'm feeling now. I'm going to have to recommend disapproval, even though you'll see me very shortly be exactly the opposite.
Thank you. Well, I certainly have the opportunity for other discussion if folks want to comment or discuss. Do you want to say something, Ms.? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Allen, please.
If I could add to Commissioner Joel Lynn's comment just now, the person who just commented on the phone, she said she didn't see why this could not be changed. The main thing is precedent. We, although it may make sense to you for this particular property in this particular community, especially with Hampden and the housing situation, we would set the precedent for elsewhere, and that's problematic. So...
Other comments?
Yeah, I was going to say, again, I mean, like Commissioner Joel Lynn, I know we'll hear the bill this afternoon, this agenda that might make, I'm about to say mute, but I do think that if this bill later today does not move forward, I'm open to revisiting, allowing conversion on some that's already mixed use, because the principle of, I understand somehow, like Mary Pat Clark's legislative thought to have some actual level of review when there's a conversion from single-family to multifamily. But here, when it's already kind of used and has lots of activity, it's an easier thing to switch from one residential unit and a bar to just two units and a bar. So that shouldn't require, in my opinion, a conversion ordinance. So if that can be done by a new determination or if it requires a legislative fix, I'm open to either one.
I don't think that would change the status.
Sorry, cutting it may be more advantageous to have a recommendation, because frequently the committee would want to have that on file. So I don't know that postponement would change anything necessarily.
Mr. Lynn, I suppose the city council could still decide how they wish to decide.
I just have to point out, since we can't help but foreshadow and draw connections to Bill 066 that we're going to hear about this afternoon, I'd like to point out that there's, I haven't heard any opposition to this matter. And we're going to hear opposition. I've read the letters already, and there are many folks who are opposed to Bill 66. But when we see it here in practice, we see nothing but support from the folks who are impacted from the surrounding community. So I just think that that's interesting. That's all.
I did not mean to foreclose discussion before a vote, so I'm happy to hear if other folks on the commission have anything they want to say before we have a motion. I've already closed public testimony. If you feel strongly, I don't mind, because I don't want to cut off debate.
I don't usually speak. I'll just listen. I'm just a, whatever, citizen of Baltimore City.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
My name is James Quigley. I'm a citizen of Baltimore City.
Yes, sir.
And I was just wondering, like, why couldn't you make them both work? Like, if it's a mixed-use establishment or a commercial establishment and it's adjacent, why couldn't it be specified that maybe, I don't know, that that could work? Because you would want the commercial establishment or the mixed-use establishment to grow instead of being vacant. It's, from what I understand about the other legislation that you're hearing, is like not letting people have a row home, an existing row home, and letting that row home become two separate units. I kind of think that the issue is the same, but it's totally different, because you have a mixed-use establishment. I assume that there's a tavern there now, ready, right? And I would assume that you would want that to grow, that commercial space, if it's vacant, you would want that commercial space to grow, number one, for tax purposes in the city, to increase tax bases. I don't know too much about R6 and R7, but I would assume that all over the city, we have so many vacant properties, that you would want people to come in to existing commercial locations or vacant locations and have that grow and keep neighborhoods, because that's what Baltimore was about. Baltimore was about businesses, immigrants living over their business. And I just think that it's the same issue, but it's two different issues. And maybe that you maybe should table this motion today and maybe do how you could make it work. That's all I got to say.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And then I'm going to, I'd like to close the testimony, but you got your hand up, so please come up and say a few words, and we'd like to move to the next item if we can.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Betty Blaine Thomas, and I live in a community called Historic Charlotte and Hall. It's one of the city's oldest still existing Afro-American communities. I want to make a comment. Oh, and welcome, Tim, to the planning department. I hope to have an opportunity to talk with you. All our communities are not alike. I think this building shows it a prime example. In my community, there's high density. We're actually being pushed out of our community because of massive development that really is not working. So I think this is a prime example why the Bill 0066 should be table, because Baltimore City is not a blanket of alike communities. Thank you.
I invite you to testify on 0066 sometime in the next several hours.
People are already testifying on it. You know, they're so similar. But I hope my point was being made. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. I am going to close public testimony, and I'm going to now. If, is there any further discussion before a motion?
I just asked to answer the citizen of Baltimore, Mr. Quigley, that another absurd part of the policy is that if the building burned down and could be reconstructed, you could reconstruct with two units by right. So that's like the other silly part of the law. But, I mean, I hear your point is taken, and that's the policy issues I'm lamenting. And so I think, I mean, I am interested in trying to find a solution that changes the laws that bind our hands right now.
I kind of think...
Sir, I'm sorry, we can't. But thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there a motion regarding the staff's report, which is to recommend disapproval?
Move to adopt staff report.
It's been moved and disapproved. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Tiso?
Commissioner Allen?
Accept staff's recommendation.
Councilman Bullock?
Accept staff recommendation.
Commissioner Griffin?
Accept staff recommendation.
Commissioner Horn?
Accept staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Joel Lynn?
Did you? Was it me? Oh, this...
Commissioner Joel Lynn.
Accept staff's recommendation.
Commissioner McCouch?
Accept staff recommendation.
Deputy Mayor Williams?
Accept staff recommendation.
Commissioner Stevenson?
Approve the motion.
And Chair Laria?
What did you say?
Approve the motion.
I'll also vote to accept the staff's recommendation, disapproval. So motion for disapproval carries. Thank you very much. We'll move to the next item. Mr. Executive Secretary?
And Justin will present this one as well. This is city council, Bill number 25090, zoning, conditional use, conversion of a single-family dwelling to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district. It's a variance at 220 North Culver Street. Justin?
Good afternoon again, everyone. Justin Walker, DOP, here for 250090. This is a residential conversion, conditional use from a single-family dwelling to two dwelling units in the R7, also with Balkan yard variances. This is in the southwest planning district, which has the community planner Kyle Leggs. To get us oriented again, here's the map of the city showing the property in the Allendale Again, looking at the plaque, you can see this is an R seven zoning with some R six scattered around it and some open space further to the east. Looking at the satellite view of the structure, you can see it's a middle-of-the-row row home. The lot measures approximately 22 by 75 and is improved with this two-story structure. And we can take a look at the rear of the structure from the alley. So the requests made in this bill today are for the conditional use conversion by itself, with no rezoning, I should say, per 9701 of the zoning code, which just needs to meet the conditional use standards that would be laid out and be approved by the Mayor and City Council to convert from the single-family dwelling to two dwelling units. A variance will also be required. The variance will be for the minimum lot area of the dwelling. The lot contains 1,650 square feet, and the R seven zoning district multifamily structures require 1,100 square feet per dwelling unit or 2,200 total. So a variance of 550 square feet or approximately 25% is going to be required for approval. So just going through, again, the conditional use standards for the conversion, staff found no reason why to, a conversion to two dwelling units would be more impactful at this specific site than any other similarly zoned location. There's no anticipated impact on traffic or parking. The use is exempt from providing parking spaces as there's less than three units in the multifamily dwelling. Nothing about the surrounding development or character of the neighborhood in staff's view would prohibit or make this use more impactful at this specific address. So again, this does require a variance to the lot area of about 25%. Going through the standard of approval for a variance, it must be found that the, due to conditions peculiar to the property, there is a practical difficulty in applying the strict letter of the code from statements with the applicant. We understand that the applicant purchased the property, and as the property is currently, it is built as two units. There were two mailboxes, two BG&E meters. In fact, it was when the applicant went to replace and update the BG&E meters that he did discover that the zoning had the property classified as a single-dwelling unit, which prompted him to begin this process. So looking at the second required finding there, exceptional circumstances relating to the structure, again, a practical difficulty would be presented if the strict letter of the law were applied. If it were applied, there would be a costly reconversion back to a single-family dwelling that would likely leave the structure vacant, as that would be very costly. And as for the other required findings for a variance, we, staff does believe that the difficulty has been caused by the code and not by the actions of anyone with an interest in the property. Again, the current owner bought it, set up in this condition. We find no reason why this would be insidious to the enjoyment of nearby properties. It doesn't appear to be based exclusively on the desire to increase the value or the income potential of the property. It is not prohibited or precluded by any urban renewal plan or the city's comprehensive plan, and it is not located in a chap district. And staff found no reason why the variance would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. And again, to foreshadow some pending legislation, this isn't going to be heard today. It's already moved through the Commission with a favorable finding, and it is currently before the council. But City Council Bill 250064 regarding the bulk-and-yard requirements would make an update to the requirements of the R seven zoning district. It would change the minimum lot area requirement from 1,100 square feet down to 750 square feet. If this bill were to take effect, the requirement would be 1,500, and therefore the site's 1,650 existing square feet would meet the criteria, allowing for approval without a variance. But again, that legislation has not been adopted as of today. Equity, again, this would keep an existing property that is set up as two dwelling units. It would allow those to return to the rental market and provide housing for the community. It has received a letter of support from the Allendale Community Association. And as far as notifications are concerned, in addition to the required findings, or I'm sorry, the required postings on the property, the Allendale Community Association was made aware, and staff provided notice via GovDelivery. So staff's recommendation is to adopt findings and approve.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. So the conditional, so you're, you're saying that the, I mean, obviously, the conditional use conversion is now required. It's eligible because it's in an R seven zoning district.
Yes.
And that obviously could be affected theoretically by the CCB 2566, which hasn't even begun to go through the process yet, so we'll just leave that aside. But the variance, which is required under current law, would not be required at all under the, the actual bill that is, and I don't know where it is, I think it's on second reader in the City Council. Is that correct? Do you know?
It was moved out of committee. There was a defect that needed to be fixed. It was recommitted to committee, but that's just going to be a short delay, I'm sure.
Right. But, but you're saying regardless, there's a, your recommendation is that meets the variance standard, correct?
That, that's right.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions for staff before we ask for other input?
Justin, what are the sizes of each of those units? I know, I see in the, in the paperwork, there's a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom. Well, what is the square footage of each? Because if they're over per dwelling unit, would that also have to be a variance as well?
So there was a recently passed bill that took effect in May, June of this year, where the conversion standards no longer have minimum unit sizes as required by the code. So there would not need to be a variance on the size of the actual units as prior to June of this year there would have been.
Thank you for the reminder.
Okay.
It's the applicant, Mr. Thomas, send the...
Is the applicant here?
See online. Okay, sorry, I, I don't have the exact square footage of the units in, in front of me, but regardless, they, they would not require additional variance.
Okay. So no questions for staff? The applicant is not here. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to testify on this item? Is there anybody online who wishes to testify on the item? Okay. Is there any discussion that the Commission would like to have before we move to a motion? Looking, nope, no discussion. Is there a motion regarding the, sorry, the staff recommendation, which is to adopt the findings and to approve the application?
Motion to adopt findings and approve.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion before we vote? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Tiso?
Commissioner Allen had to step out, but will join us online in a moment. Councilmember Bullock?
Approved.
Commissioner Griffin?
Approved.
Commissioner Horn?
Approved.
Commissioner Joel Lynn?
Approved.
Commissioner McCouch?
Approved.
Deputy Mayor Williams?
Approved.
Commissioner Stevenson?
Approved.
And Chair Lariat?
Approved. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Executive Secretary, please call the next item for us.
Item number nine is the City Council Bill Number 250066, zoning, housing options and opportunity. This is an amendment to the zoning code that would apply citywide. And Eric Tiso is going to present this item for staff. I did want to make a few comments before Eric speaks to it, as this is a, ultimately will be a recommendation.
Mr. Murphy, are you...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask...
And there's no, there's no opportunity for you...
I just, I just want to ask, before we get into this, that this bill be tabled.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, please, you're out of order. I would ask you to please sit down.
This goes back...
I don't know what you understand. I'm asking you, please, to sit down. Mr. Murphy, this is inappropriate.
I, I think it's inappropriate to hold the hearing on this bill.
Okay.
This law has been in effect for over 100 years, single-family neighborhoods.
Mr. Murphy, please, please respect, please respect the Commission and the proceedings and have a seat, and you can certainly testify...
I'm asking before you get started that this not happen. You have not been out to talk to the neighborhoods to find out what their attitude is on this bill.
Yeah.
You are not able to know what this is all about until you talk to these neighborhoods that have been in this effect for over 100 years. All, all the counties surrounding Baltimore City had this same zoning, and this, this ought to come at the end of a lengthy process of consultation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Let me, if I may, before you speak, and I certainly want the Planning Director to speak. I just want a little bit of framework here, and I think people who have been following this bill and the ones that came before it will, will not be surprised by this. As the, we know this is an important bill. It obviously is, is a citywide bill. It does have significant implications. As, as we did with the three prior bills related to changes to the zoning and building code that have been through the Commission, we have elected to do these in two meetings. The first meeting, this one, is for us to listen to what the sponsor and what proponents and opponents of the bill have to say, and we want to hear from everybody who is, has an interest in the bill without the pressure of voting at the end of the meeting, which is hard to do on something of this significance. So this will be the first real public discussion of the bill. I might point out, despite prior comments, this is not the end of the process. It's the beginning of the process, as far as we're concerned. So there will be opportunity for the Commissioners to ask questions of those who testify and to ask questions in general, which, as we did with the prior bills, will, we expect to have those questions answered at a subsequent hearing, which could take place as soon as our next Planning Commission meeting. The date has not been determined. I think frankly, it depends on what, how this bill proceeds and also what the sponsor would, would want us to do when the sponsor is able to hear public testimony today and, and other opportunities, I understand, are being provided. So I just want to explain, because if you're, if you've been here today, you know, typically we, we hear something and then we vote. We're not doing that on this bill. That is not the culmination of today. This is about opening the door to a discussion on the process, on the, on the substance of the bill. There will be questions. Staff will note the questions. We'll expect answers to those questions to continue to inform us, and we will schedule a vote on the bill at the appropriate time. I'll also remind everybody, I think people know this, but that the Commission is not the ultimate authority on the bill. This is a mayor and city council bill sponsored by the mayor, introduced to council, will go to the Land Use Committee, and ultimately, the city council, full council, and then, of course, the mayor have the, the role of, of passing an ordinance. Our, our, our work here is essentially a recommendation. I think we're considered to be in the realm of subject matter experts, because we are the Planning Commission, but it's a recommendation to the mayor and the city council. The other thing I wanted to, so, just so folks know, we'll have a staff report, we'll have the sponsor speak, or representative of the sponsor speak, we'll have testimony, both live and virtual, and support and opposition. We are going to limit testimony to three minutes, which worked fine the last time, and I think is the custom both here and in the council. So we will be timing people who want to testify. Also, we have a significant number of written submissions. They're on the record. We've read them all, as you heard earlier. I think one of the commissioners made reference to the fact that he had read them. If you've already written in the record, you, I'm certainly not going to prevent you from testifying, but please understand that we have read those, and it would be useful if you did not reiterate those or simply referred to any written testimony that you might have. There's no need to repeat it. Also, if someone else has said what you want to say, it's fine to say, you know, I agree with the person who testified before me, but you're going to have your three minutes if you, if you want to have it. It's not a problem whatsoever. So I think those are the important elements. One thing I will say, and I think the Director will address this as well, the, the staff report, further to the point, the staff report for today's bill does not have a staff recommendation, which is unusual for those of you who know how this process typically works and who have been here today to see what, how the staff has handled it. That was a deliberate decision by myself and the new Director of Planning, because we all want to listen to what people have to say about the bill before even the staff makes a recommendation on the bill, because this, this really is, and I think there will be others, but this really is the first truly sort of convened formal public hearing on what is an important piece of legislation. So the staff report, which you'll hear, is essentially explanatory and analytical. It does not make a recommendation deliberately for the reasons that I've just described. So I think those are the things that I wanted to say at the outset before we begin, and with that, I will turn it over to Director Keen for his comments, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Care. I did want to speak just briefly to this. Eric Tiso will present the, the staff report, but just to give some context around staff's consideration of this and the recommendation that we ultimately make to the Planning Commission, this legislation is an important consideration for a city seeking to achieve the best outcomes from its continued development. We are highly concerned that Baltimore continue to be a diverse city in every way and that we give all residents opportunities to participate in the city's progression. How we regulate land use and development is an important part of this. Too often, cities have used regulation, and we had a great example of this earlier today. Too often, cities have used regulation as a barrier to people with less resources making housing and more generally participating in our local economy. Reforming our regulations to be much more inclusive is a significant, all-encompassing effort. We're not providing a recommendation on this bill today at my request. Having participated in a similar, in similar efforts in other cities, I felt it was important and helpful for us to hear from residents about the details of this bill, so we can provide a thoughtful and responsive recommendation. It's easy and way too often typical for cities to sit still and let change do to the city and its residents what it will. This administration, in contrast, is firmly committed to helping, to helping residents prosper in every way. Our recommendation will ultimately demonstrate this commitment and also importantly, respect the ideas and suggestions of our neighborhoods and their residents. So with that, Eric, if you could present the details of what's being proposed.
Yes, sir. So this is a bill that will do a lot of things, but its intent at its core is to promote an increased variety of development in housing, specifically through the new proposed low-density multifamily dwelling use. So for those that may have seen my public information session back in August 12th, a lot of this material will look the same. I will linger here for a moment. If anybody, either playing along at home via WebEx or here, want to open the actual first reader copy of the bill, that's the QR code on the left, or if you're really going for, for extra, you can open the entirety of the zoning codes, you can cross compare back and forth, should you so choose to do so. Walking through a little bit of the history for this particular bill, elements of this were included in a prior bill in the last session, though it was not adopted. It was a very complex bill, and this session, it was split apart into multiple bills that have already come through this Commission. 62 is the single exit bill that you heard. 63 was only referred to the agency itself, which we supported, which transfers the zoning administrator's office from housing to planning. And Bill 64, which is the bulk-and-yard requirement bill that you also heard, all three of those are winding their way through council, along with Bill 65, which would eliminate off street vehicle parking requirements. So this is the fifth in that chain of bills. So just as a quick overview of what it does, it creates a new defined land use of dwelling multifamily low-density. It also provides a cross-reference that flips it the other way around, so if we call it low-density multifamily dwelling, it means the same thing. There's a proposed definition for that included in the bill. There is, in the applicability section, in some of our technical reviews in Title Four of the zoning code, there are several of them that we do here in planning. Design review is one of those, and there was a design review trigger for conversions. Since the bill removes conditional use conversions, that line is no longer needed, so it's, it's cleaned out there. In Title Eight, under district descriptions, and Title Eight is where the lower-density residential zones start and the higher-density ones start in Title Nine, it alters the description of the districts in Title Eight, where today it only says single-family dwellings, so it adds to it... it adds to it the newly proposed low-density multifamily dwelling as being allowed in the lower-density residential districts. The tables are accordingly changed, so Table 8301 is the use tables for the R1A through R4. That's the lower-density half of our residential zones. And then, whoop, there was a typo there. It should have been 9301 and 9401 are the accompanying ones in the higher-density half of our residential districts. Then there is a table 12301 that is amended to allow the new use to be proposed. No changes, if you're looking for the pattern, no changes are needed in 12401 because they all refer to the same bulk standards regardless, so there's no effect there, so no amendment is needed. All right, so walking through the bill itself, in the preamble, the first section, you see that it's proposing to delete several sections at 9701 through 9703. That's the part that only allows for conditional use conversions. So right now, R6 and less-dense zones are not allowed to do conversions. We saw an example of that earlier today. R7 and R8 require a legislative action through the mayor and city council. R9 and 10 have to go through the zoning board, so it would remove that. Here in the proposed definition is where we explain what this dwelling multifamily low density is. Basically, it is two, three, or four units that are in one building, okay? And then there is a cross-reference there, so if you want to call it, you know, dwelling multifamily low density or low-density multifamily dwelling, means the same thing in the zoning code here today. In our Title IV, 405, there are normally, I think, 17 or 18 things in that list that trigger design review. If this bill is approved and conversions are removed, then that would not be a thing needed on this trigger list. So those brackets that I've highlighted would delete that line out of the trigger list. Here is what I was talking about with editing the district descriptions, where it says the lower-density half of our residential districts are appropriate for single-family dwellings or for a low-density multifamily dwelling, which gets created in this bill. Likewise, because currently in the lower-density half of our residential zones, conversions are not prohibited, are not allowed, it would remove that section with the brackets there. Looking at our tables, it inserts the newly defined dwelling multifamily low density, adds P for permitted all the way across. If you're familiar with looking at these tables, whenever there's a P for it's permitted by right, a CB is conditional, requiring the BMZA to approve by conditional use, CO is conditional use by ordinance. That's legislative action through mayor and city council, and if it's blank, you just can't do it there. The multifamily low-density use is added into the bulk table in the same line where detached dwellings or semi-detached dwellings are listed. This is important to note this because if it were not, it would follow what you would expect in today's code where each dwelling unit would have its own lot area requirement. So whatever that number is, you multiply by the number of units, and that's how big the property needs to be. Because this new use is listed on the same line with single-family dwellings, the same bulk requirements apply. So where you have a lot that is big enough to host one dwelling unit, it is also big enough to hold a multifamily low-density, which could have two, three, or four units, okay? So picking one, if I'm in an R1 district, 7,300 square feet, that's good enough for one dwelling unit. It's good enough for a multifamily low-density use. Whoop, I double-clicked. Now, and this, we also touched on earlier, because the conversion standards in today's code got simplified, it removed the interior space per unit because that was problematic trying to figure out exactly how much square foot one unit versus another in a building took. Sometimes those specific sizes just didn't work where you have, let's say, you know, a row home that's got three stories, but the third floor is a little shorter than the other, you might have the sum total, but not exactly enough for this, but too much for that, but you can't share 50 square feet from one floor to the next. This requirement is for the gross floor area of the structure, but not counting any basement area. That's an easier number for us to calculate, and in essence, if you can average out the total, it'll probably work, and no matter what, building code requirements still apply. So for two units, three units, or four units, they will have the same numbers going across, so 1,500 square feet of interior building space, not including the basement. Three units, 2250. Four units, 3,000, and that's across the board.
Mr. Tiesel, one quick question because it just relates that slide, so I don't lose my, I think somewhere in the current conversion code, provisions of the code, there's some sorting based upon bedrooms, isn't that correct?
There was, but it was removed a few months ago.
I was trying to remember.
Right, so it's currently not in the code. So conversion bills, it's just currently the lot area factor. So you would need to take number of dwelling units times a lot area requirement equals a total. This recognizes that size of structure, and to back up a bit, when we overhauled the zoning code, we were trying to figure out when you have a multifamily structure and knowing that there's a wide variety of buildings around the city, you could have a really small building on a relatively big lot, or you could have the reverse. You could have a big four-story, massive, you know, townhome that is its own property boundary. So it's very small of property area in relation to volume of building. So over the years, we've been trying to figure out how to make that work. So the unit-by-unit calculation doesn't seem to work well and was removed. This now recognizes the size of the building because that's the part that matters to make a functional unit, not the square footage of the property.
Yeah, please put your mic up.
Simple clarification, Eric. The last, in the last year or so, as we've been doing a lot of these conversions, we're finding a lot of the units incorporate square footage in the basement. So how would we know all those, that multiple dwelling unit conversion? Well, it's not a conversion anymore, but how would we account for that when that change is made?
Right, so the basement area, so long as you meet building code, can still be used for residential, but it's not being included in the structure's gross floor area. That's the footnote. So just to be clear, it does not preclude the basement being developed, but in cases where there have been smaller structures, those tend to be the ones where the basements are not always as efficient or effective for use. That was the choice that was, that was made. I don't have too much more detail.
It seems like sometimes the basement is the thing that allows a unit to exist because they need the square footage.
In some cases, that is true, and some it's not. You know, this is where zoning is a very blunt tool. Really, it, it's hard to make something that works across a wide variety of cases. And so, you know, you could have a basement area that has no windows, no separate exit, that doesn't work, it's got a low ceiling height. That's a problem. You could have a, you know, clear height, you know, eight-foot ceiling with half windows in the front and a walkout rear. They're both basements, but the zoning code doesn't treat them, doesn't see them as different.
So then something like this would be caught at plan's review?
Yes, they would have to meet building code requirements no matter what. So for zoning purposes, taking a slightly more conservative approach, not including the basement square footage in the building's gross floor area for purposes of the overall density, but not restricting its use if it can meet that requirement. So trying to thread the needle. Likewise, in Table 9301, this is our more dense half of our residential zones. It is adding the dwelling multifamily density, low-density to R5 through R8. R9 and 10 are uncommon around the city. They tend to be our high-rise residential zones where density is appropriate, so it wasn't a concern that needed fixing by this bill. In a similar way, multifamily low-density is added to the same line where single-family dwellings are allowed, so again, same rule applies. If you have the square footage for a single-family dwelling, that is enough for a multifamily low-density. I didn't add the highlighting here, but the same interior space requirements throughout the whole of the building minus the basement applies here. So again, it's, it's the same all the way across. And it's basically treated the same as other dwellings all the way through the bulk requirements for our higher-density zones with respect to yard and all of that, and it has the same basement area calculation note. In 12301, that's our use table for office residential districts. It adds it as a permitted use, just like all of the others. And again, we didn't have to do anything with the bulk table because all of the uses have the same bulk, so there's no difference to choose from there. Okay, as you heard a little bit already, there's some interaction with some other things. So Council Bill 64, which would tweak the bulk and yard requirements, you know, that, the purpose of that bill is to give people a little bit more room to develop their properties without triggering variances, which this commission has seen a lot of, is almost, you're doing a conversion, you don't have a variance. So that is designed to right-size the code to what we have been seeing in recent decades, actually. Likewise, Council Bill 65 would remove off-street parking requirements for vehicles. So as it sits in today's zoning code, 1, 2, or 3 dwelling units do not require parking. So the only parking requirement for a new low-density multifamily dwelling would be if there was a fourth unit. As it sits today, if this use was available, they would have to provide one parking space for the fourth unit. If Bill 65 is approved, they would not. I can touch on a little bit of the history of how conversions have been treated in the city, if that is interesting to you. In the famous words of Inigo Montoya, "Is too much, I sum up." The zoning code was first created in 1931. It sat there for the longest time, and in that form of early zoning code, there were two maps. One had bulk and height zones, and then the other map had the use zones. So depending on how those overlapped with one another around the city, you could have two buildings on opposite corners that are in the same height district but may have different uses, or they may be in the same use district, but one could be in a bigger bulk district than the other. So you take that patchwork and try and, in 1971, overhaul to a more modern-style Euclidian zoning code with a cascading uses and requirements, and it was a bit of a tough fit, trying, because there was so much variety in the historic structures around the city. So the planners of the day did the best they could. That code stood for the longest time. In 1999, just before I joined the department, there was a recodification, which I understand didn't change substantially what the code did, but it changed it to a more modern formatting style, and then that lasted all the way through 2017, at the end of a seven-year process through Transform Baltimore, which many on this commission would remember, where we completely overhauled the zoning code, and that is what we have today. So along the way, under the old code, in 1999, ordinance 99425, changed the zoning code at that time to prohibit conversions of dwellings. Again, this is just before I joined the team. It was my understanding that in R6 and less-dense neighborhoods, the council of the time did not want to see more buildings being cut up, as the term that they used historically then, into multiple units. I note that the recitals of the ordinance provided the rationale of the day where the council of the time had as their stated purpose in doing this, that they wanted to meet the housing needs of the city's present and future population and to promote the stability and desirability of residential areas. They were concerned that the conversion of single-family and two-family dwellings would contribute to destabilization of a neighborhood by bringing in more people, increasing congestion, raising demand for parking, because the city's population had been declining. No demand for additional dwellings existed in their mind, and that the creation of additional dwellings in one neighborhood would create vacancies in other neighborhoods. And so therefore, they thought that prohibiting conversions of dwellings in the lower-density residential districts would contribute to the stability of those districts and to the stability of all of the city's neighborhoods. Now, we see that, it appears that council of the time took notice of the declining population of the city, which has been approaching a stasis but not quite there yet in recent years, but it appears that there was an assumption that Baltimore was a closed system, that there was going to be no functional in-migration from anywhere else, and that if you were to create an apartment unit in a building, the only possible occupant of that unit would be somebody that could have chosen a single-family dwelling elsewhere, but for whatever reason, elected not to. With the benefit of hindsight, I think we see that that may not really be an accurate picture. There may be some of that, but there's a wide variety of demands and different types of housing at different price points, more importantly, different sizes and arrangements. And so there was a one-size-fits-all chosen in that day, and that stayed more or less all the way through to 2011, where R8 zones, which is our common rural home districts, had been seeing a lot of conversions at that time, and it was decided to make conversions in R8 require an ordinance. The following year in 2012, R7 was added to that ordinance list. In 2014, council further amended the requirement to say, okay, you can do conditional use conversions, just like before, still requiring an ordinance in R7 and R8, board everywhere else in R9 and 10, but you have to meet the bulk requirements of the zone. I believe that the implication was, in parentheses, no variances allowed, but proceeded to issue many of them with variances, and so that just kind of happened. So upon adoption of today's Article 32 zoning in 2017, we more or less carried on that conditional use conversion, but simplified it to match their actual application, and that's what we have to this day. So that's as fast a history as I can, but I think it's kind of important to see over the past several decades, where have we gone from not requiring anything for conversions? Because if we were back in 1998, you could put a permit over the counter if you met the parking requirements of the day, if you met the bulk and yard requirements, you got a permit. 1999 and after, that's when the conditional use kicks in, and even if you meet all of those bulk requirements, it's still that conditional use finding. So, oh, there, I already walked through that. So this year, state of Maryland had a commission to look at accessory dwelling units or ADUs. I think they had three big meetings with folks from all over the state, various jurisdictions, to talk about accessory dwelling units. Even here on staff, we have noted over history, there was an effort to look at this in the 80s and in the 90s. It seems whenever there's a market downturn, this kind of pops up, but it never really went anywhere. So the state did this, and they adopted a policy on ADUs, and I won't read this to you, but basically the intent and understanding, we are not the target jurisdiction for this necessarily, I think they're really intending this to aim at our rural and suburban jurisdictions throughout the state. But in essence, wherever there can be a single-family dwelling, they want that property to also have the ability to have an accessory dwelling unit or ADU, and they give a definition there so it can be up to 75% of the size and so forth. But basically, it maintains the use as approved as a single-family dwelling, okay? So that's the intent. And it talks about, you know, why they want to do that. They want to create, you know, additional forms of housing, and they direct local jurisdictions that by October 1st of next year, that we should adopt a local law furthering this policy. So I understand from the law department that, you know, this may not actually have teeth to it, but we're already doing it, okay? If this bill were to be approved in roughly the form that it's in, we would substantially outperform the state's goals. You could not only have a single-family dwelling, but you could have potentially two, three, or four full units. So I think we would be in good shape to meet their intent.
May I ask you one quick question?
Yes, sir.
Because I read that law. I think, among other things, the state ADU law defines accessory dwelling unit, you don't have to put it up there unless you have it handy, a structure that is separate from or attached as an addition to. And I guess, do you know whether that is intended to basically be a new construction ADU? ADU, whether it is attached ADU or standalone ADU?
I got to see the first two of the commission, you know, committee meetings on it. So they were looking at a variety of options, whether it is within the main structure, whether it is attached, so let's say you have an attached garage that you want to convert, or even if it's in a detached. I don't think they had a priority choice.
No, but my question is not so much attached or detached. My question is, if you converted, if you created an ADU essentially within the confines, the boundaries of an existing structure, that's not what that is, I think. Does that sound right to you?
I was thinking that it was just an ADU, period, because without that, it wouldn't, it would preclude you from including it in the main structure. So I read it.
Yeah, well, let's not get stuck on it.
Sure.
But I'd just like to run that down, because one of the, I asked you to include this in part, and I mean, you're going to include it anyway, but, because I want to just, I want to understand very clearly the relationship. I'm not suggesting that they're the same. They're not the same. But I'm just trying to line that up. So that'll be a question for you.
Yeah.
To try and sort out, maybe even by talking with them, to appreciate the relationship, the precise relationship between that and what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, I understand the crafting of language here does not cover all options, and I'm looking at 4501B, 2, Romeo 1 and 2.
Yeah.
So that's where it covers the separate and attached.
Yeah.
This is, well, without adding too much color commentary, sometimes when folks write these bills, they have a particular end state that they're looking at and don't always consider other options. I don't think there would be objection without putting words in their mouth. If somebody wanted to add an ADU within a main structure, it still furthers their goal.
It's not whether, it's whether it's required.
Yeah.
But let's come, let's put a pin in it. Thank you very much.
That's fine. Okay. So where does this matter, and what are the potential impacts? So I wanted to grab some maps that covers our residential zones, all the way from R1A, the lowest dense, all the way through R10, our most dense, and put them on a map. So all of these that are not gray are all of our residential zones. Zooming in just a little bit, since I know it's an eye chart and there's nothing in the industrial southern tip of the city that is residential. Anyway, these are all of the areas, so that, like, yellowy-green spectrum are all of our residential zones, where you see little dots of blue and red throughout. Those are some of our overlay zones, where there's a multi-zone property, in case you happen to see those. So if we just look at our lower residential density half, the R1A through R4, that's these. They tend to be at the periphery of the city, as one might expect. We're more dense to the center and less dense to the outside, especially in our northern 1/3. The reverse, this is where our higher-density residential, this is the R5 through R10, that's where they are. We put together a quick chart of end-to-end our zoning categories, how many acres they have, what percentage of the city's land area that zone occupies, and then the percentage just amongst residentially zones, so that's just the R1A through R10, that that individual zone represents. And I know this is a bit of an eye chart, but in case somebody had the question, we wanted to try and have that available. This is on a quick GIS study, and we could probably refine that going forward, but in case it becomes relevant, that's what we have for the moment. So I think I have covered all of the wind-up of what the bill is, what it does, related things, and a history lesson for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thanks. What I'd like to do before we have questions is to hear from Representative the sponsor, and I don't know, I saw that we were elected official of Council in Dorsey, you might want to speak to it. So why don't we do those, and then we'll do some questions for those folks, and then obviously, we'll continue on with testimony and continued discussion. So please, come on, introduce yourself, sir, and...
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tyler Chanel. I serve as the Deputy Director for Government Relations for Mayor Scott. Before I start, I do just want to say that at the top, this package of bills together is about doing exactly what we've seen here not too long ago, which is cutting the red tape. Right? We've seen an opportunity to create housing have to be rejected by this commission. And what we're trying to do here is to create more opportunities to create housing by clearing some of those, you know, things that still remain in our laws. Sorry, pull up my remarks here. Which I just had up. So thank you for the opportunity to present the Housing Options and Opportunity Act. I'm here, obviously, on behalf of Mayor Scott. This legislation is a key part of the mayor's broader $3 billion plan to fight vacant properties, expand affordability, and make Baltimore a city where everyone can find a home that fits their needs. We all know that housing, not only in Baltimore, but across the state, has become too expensive and too limited. In fact, 70% of Baltimoreans say the cost of housing is a major issue. The median sale price of a home has gone up 34% since 2020. And last year, 40% of renters in Baltimore spent more than 1/3 of their income on rent. And 99%, according to a poll conducted by the state, 99% of Maryland residents between the ages of 18 and 34 say it is harder to buy a home today than in any previous generation. At the same time, we don't have enough of the types of housing people actually want, smaller, flexible, multifamily homes that give our residents more options. We know that for many Baltimoreans, families looking for more space, retirees looking to downsize, or young people looking for their first place, multifamily housing is often the most viable pathway to homeownership. But for too long, our zoning code has made it more difficult to produce this type of housing. Instead, it has been used unintentionally and sometimes intentionally to segregate, to exclude, to limit where certain types of housing can be built, and, as we just saw with City Council Bill 250089, perpetuate vacancy. You can drive around today and still see the legacy of redlining across our city. It has shaped who has access to opportunity and who doesn't. Times have changed, and we have to meet this moment. At a time where affordable and flexible housing is at the top of minds, for many, we have the opportunity to do more. The Housing Options and Opportunity Act is about changing that. This bill says that opportunity shouldn't stop at a neighborhood boundary or at a zoning district boundary. It says that we will allow the creation of more housing in every neighborhood, not just in black communities. And most importantly, it gives our residents a choice, the ability to find housing that fits their needs, no matter what stage of life they're in. There are some who believe that creating more housing will push out legacy residents, when in reality, restricting housing supply and limiting the choice is what drives up costs and forces people out. Expanding housing options does the opposite. It helps keep our families rooted, it builds stability, and it ultimately strengthens our neighborhoods. That is what this bill is about, opening doors and creating opportunity, not displacement. Now, we also understand that there have been quite a few misconceptions about what this bill does and doesn't do, which is why we obviously will be taking the time to engage directly with community. So we will be hosting two community engagement opportunities, one on Monday, October 20th, and another on Monday, October 27th. With more details about both opportunities will go out in the coming weeks. But we do want to make sure that every Baltimorean who's interested has the opportunity to understand how this bill will benefit their community and the city as a whole. And just as I, you know, prepare to close, housing policy isn't just about buildings. It's about people. It's about families trying to stay rooted in their neighborhoods, young professionals trying to make Baltimore home, and seniors trying to stay close to the communities they helped build. The Housing Options and Opportunity Act helps make that possible. It's about building a city that's more affordable, more inclusive, and more reflective of the people who call this great city home. So thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, or the commission, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Councilman, do you wish to speak while you're here, or defer?
I'll defer, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's just pause, and let me ask the commission if you have questions for staff, Mr. Tissot's presentation, or for Representative the mayor's office, just on what's been presented, anything that you've wanted to ask about, just to kind of fill in any gaps, or whatever you may have, and then we'll obviously turn to testimony and we'll continue the discussion. Councilman?
Mr. Chair, I just want to note that Delegate Regina Boyce is here. I know she had commentary.
Delegate Boyce, if you wish to be heard, that's fine, you can do it now, or you can wait until we do this round?
I'm just listening. I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. I'm just listening, thanks.
Of course. Thank you, delegate. So commissioners, anything right now, or do you want to, shall we keep going and we can come back to you? Yes, keep going, keep going? Okay, very good. All right. Well, what we're going to do now is we're going to ask first for folks who are here who wish to speak in support of the legislation, and I'm going to do that first by looking, as you've seen, of people in the room, and then we'll look at people online. So if you wish to speak in support, please raise your hand, and I'll just tell you, okay, sir, please come on up. If you introduce yourself for the record. I should say, and I think I said this in my opening remarks, there are a substantial number of letters in the record. I know I've read them, I imagine other commissioners have read them based on what they've said. Some of those people are represented here presumably, some are not. We're going to read them, we're going to take them all seriously. If you were one of the letter writers, feel free to make reference to it, but please understand that whether you're providing oral testimony or something in writing, we will look at it. And let me also say that if you're testifying today, and you want to supplement what you're saying in writing, because you think there's something more that needs to be said, please send it. Because as I've said, we are not voting today. We have time to listen to what people have to say, whether it's in oral testimony or in written testimony. Sir?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Luria. My name is Will...
You have three minutes, I'm sorry, just want to remind you.
Set a stopwatch. My name is Will Fetter. I testified earlier about a single-family to multifamily conversion earlier, in sort of that specific case, but I wanted to kind of offer my perspective as somebody who's like actively looking for a rental place right now. I have alerts set up on my phone for basically any 2-bedroom under $1,600. I've seen all of them, I know where they are. Almost, I would say, the overwhelming majority of them are in houses that were built as single-family homes and converted to multifamily. There are some that aren't, but just the majority of those, it is that type of unit. Now, the way that I see it is that I should be able to spend my own money to live in a place that I like, and that the burden should be like, at least like relatively high, if you're going to tell me not to do that. And I don't think sort of the way that the current rules are set up really meet that standard. You know, something that's passed into law 100 years ago, I think it's time for us to like maybe reevaluate that kind of thing. Because, you know, for people in my generation, like, who did not have the good sense to be born in the 1970s instead of the 1990s, it's really hard to afford someplace like that, or to own a home. And when I was also, like, my parents were kind of pushing me a little bit to like, hey, maybe look at buying a place. A lot of the places I'm looking at are maybe like 300, like, the monthly payments would be like $300 or $400 more than I would really be comfortable paying for. But if I could convert that unit into multiple ones, and like rent out the top floor, or rent out the basement, I would be able to afford it. So like, not only are these rules driving up my rent, they're locking me out of homeownership. Where I could do that, rent it out for a little bit, then, you know, if I have kids, I can convert it back into a single-family home. And then I'm on the ladder with everybody else, or, you know, in sort of like that homeownership phase. So it's just like, as we hear from, like, you know, the various complaints and grievances about sort of this process, or about the parking, or the neighborhood character, or whatever, that's costing my generation a lot of money, every month, out the window. How good are those reasons? How compelling are they when it comes to like, the cost that it puts on the rest of us? So, yeah, I think that is about everything I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for the gentlemen? Okay. Are there others in the audience physically who wish to testify in favor of the bill? Seeing none, we'll turn to online. Are there folks online who wish to testify in favor?
There are a few hands at Mr. Chair, but we won't know whether they're for or against, only that they wish to speak.
Yeah, let's just do them all last, and we'll just manage people, we'll be able to fit them into our framework, that's fine. Now, are there individuals here in the audience who wish to testify against the bill? Okay, in no particular order. Ma'am, why don't we start with you? And if you just introduce yourself for the record, that would be great.
Hello, I'm Judge Jared, Jerry Salle, Sally. I do have a speech impairment. Please be patient, and I'm nervous, I hate public speaking, so that makes it worse. But I want to speak against this, because this is a blanket bill that doesn't fit every neighborhood. I live in Rich, Little East, Delight, which is a small piece of southwest Baltimore. Because we are right there at university, hospital, and college, we have high demand for rents. So a lot of the homes there are already subdivided. But the cars have not left, because transportation in this city is horrible. Because the cars have not left, people like me who have, for years, had to come home late at night because I'm caring for other folk, I've had to park outside of my neighborhood and in other folks' neighborhoods, which I know I was a burden for them, sorry, y'all, but I was. But this will only make things worse in that we have recently had more development in our neighborhood. Parking has gotten horrendous. For us, that is a no-go. Also, I wanted to speak about two things. One, the public transportation, as I already said, it is unreliable, and is also... Also, legacy residence, I'm not really sure what you meant by that, but in my grandmother's neighborhood, we already have that. And what I mean, you have three generations in one house, but those homes are larger and they can house that. But they can't house the additional parking, so even those homes, which are larger, still have the same problems that my small neighborhood has as well. Also, the infrastructure of my neighborhood, those homes were built in the late, I'm sorry, the mid to late 1800s. The city has not improved the infra... of my neighborhood. If you keep taking up more and more green space, the flooding will only get worse. We have had so many water main breaks, we have had sinking of the drainage because of the amount of water flow that sits on top of the roads, because it cannot drain out. You're creating more problems for older dense neighborhoods. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming out. Mr. Murphy, or I... Please.
You know, at my age, you like to tell stories. And I remember I was a young lawyer, many years ago, back in, let's say, just Grant administration. And the first zoning case I had, I was representing the Mount Holly Improvement Association. They were out on Gwynne's Falls Parkway. They were in no sense a white privileged group. They were a group of black homeowners who were intent on maintaining the character of their neighborhood. And the woman in charge of the organization, she was very effective. Her strategy to win the cases in front of the zoning board was to rent a school bus, and everybody came to the church, and she put everybody in a school bus and took them down at the hearing. I really didn't have to do anything. But my point is, is that... But my point is, is that single-family neighborhoods are the backbone of our society. 75% nationwide are in single-family homeownership. In the counties around Baltimore, it's in the 70s percent. This is what people want. Maybe they're misguided. That could well be. I don't know. I doubt it. I think people are not stupid. That's what I was taught in law school. They said, never underestimate the common sense of the average person. I think people get what they want. They want a single-family neighborhood. And you can say, well, nobody's going to make you convert your home to a multifamily. But that doesn't prevent the guy next door from doing it. I looked at my own little street. I'm not a wealthy guy at all. I've been representing neighborhoods my whole life. That's why I'm not wealthy. They don't have a lot of money to spend. But I looked at my little street. We could double the density if this bill gets passed. Nobody has garages anymore. They're all parking right on the street. The average family has two people working to, just as a matter of course, and two cars. So on my little street, there's really no excess parking. I can't imagine what it would be like if we doubled or tripled the number of units. But that's not the point. The point is, it's the American dream. The American dream, instead of paying rent over the years, you pay off your mortgage. You end up, at the end of 30 years or so in mortgage payments, with some equity in your house. And that enables you to have some money in addition to Social Security. This is really the American dream you're playing with. I lived through the '71 zoning. It took a long time. I lived through Transform Baltimore. You know how long Transform Baltimore took-
Seven years.
-the bill? It was four years from the time the bill got introduced until it was passed.
Mr. Murphy, can I just ask you to wrap up?
I'm wrapping up.
Thank you very much.
My life was wrapped up years ago. But I really encourage you to get out and talk to the neighborhoods. These bills are being pushed through. That's totally wrong. You ought to study them at great length, and listen to the neighbors. Find out what they really want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Murphy? Thank you. Mr. Landers?
Good job, John. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, we've all heard this. Baltimore's the city of neighborhoods. It's a strong, and has a lot of strong neighborhoods. One of the reasons it's a city of neighborhoods is because the city has been in partnership with neighborhoods by having reasonable zoning laws that preserve single-family housing, promote homeownership opportunities. The city's invested millions of dollars in programs like Live Baltimore and Healthy Neighborhoods to promote homeownership. Clearly, these programs have been successful in helping to preserve thriving neighborhoods. So it is completely baffling to me why we want to change policy now and create an incentive for absentee landlords and investors to acquire single-family houses in stable neighborhoods. With this bill and the companion bills, the city's betraying the many homeowners who've chosen to live and invest in single-family neighborhoods by changing the rules, shifting them in preference to investors and absentee landlords over neighborhood preservation and homeownership. You heard what this bill does. It essentially renders single-family zoning completely meaningless, because the bill permits up to four dwelling units on any residential lot. I mean, yes, there are some standards, but basically, with the companion bills, you pretty much could get four dwelling units on most lots in most of these residential zones. Stable, affordable neighborhoods will become prime targets for this type of speculation that I'm talking about, which only undercuts our efforts to promote and preserve homeownership. I can tell you, based on 35 years in the real estate business, mostly working with homebuyers in the residential market, that homebuyers can't compete against investors. They can't compete because investors offer cash contracts, quick settlements, no inspections, no appraisers, appraisals, and they'll pay closing costs. We all get these in the mail. This is one just came two months ago to my house. Check attached to it for $225,000. Says, "Make this a reality. No showings, no inspections. We'll take the house as-is. Pick your closing date. Leave behind any unwanted items. No commissions, no fees. We pay closing costs." This is what you're opening the floodgates to, this type of speculation in neighborhoods that are actually viable housing markets now, attracting a lot of homebuyers. Do we need more rental housing in the city? Absolutely. But this bill is not targeted to vacancies. I heard a lot of talk about, "We don't want vacancies." This bill isn't targeted to vacancies. It's like taking a shotgun and saying, "We're going to kill the flea," and it doesn't target any of the 42,000 vacant houses that are in Baltimore, like the one that we heard earlier. Let's target this type of bill to vacant houses. Let's not open the floodgates and say, "Any residential property in the city can be converted." Instead of targeting, this bill will cannibalize existing single-family housing stock, diminish homeownership opportunities, and actually only add to the cost of housing. Homebuyers can't compete in this process. When homebuyers go to put an offer in on a house, they're going to be up against this kind of offer. And this is under the current circumstances, where it's difficult to get a conversion. You make this conversion so easy that any property owner, or any buyer, any investor, can come in and purchase a house, you will be opening the floodgates to a lot of substandard, scattered-type housing. And I've seen it. I've seen people who buy houses in our neighborhoods, they do schlocky work, they'll put two apartments in, and then they're looking for cash flow. They're not looking for neighborhood stability or for to protect homebuyers.
May I ask you to drop off?
Thank you. And by the way, I have, these are abbreviated marks, I have extensive remarks. I'm happy to provide a lot of data. There's an awful lot of data. And just one anecdote. Last year, and I no longer have my real estate license. I gave up my license about six months ago. It's too much of a headache. But last year, I was involved in three residential transactions up in the Hartford Road corridor. Reasonably priced, $220,000. Every single one of those properties went to an investor. But you know what? Because of the existing zoning code, the only thing that investor could do is improve it to the top of the market and resell it as a single-family house. And I assure you, if this bill had been in effect, every single one of those houses would have been converted to a multifamily dwelling unit. They would have, their incentive would have been to invest as little money as possible in order to get the highest return that they can on rents, and it would have taken those houses out of the homeownership market. Thank you.
And as I've said in the past, if you have information you want to submit, I've read what you've sent.
Yeah.
If you have more data, more information, send it to Mr. Tisa. We will certainly see it, okay?
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Eric, I want to thank you for your 30-minute report. It was very informative. I have a little history I want to share, but I only have three minutes.
Would you just, for the record, if you don't mind your name? I'm sorry.
Oh, for sure.
We know you, but...
Okay. My name is Betty. The last name is Belanne Thomas. I'm the president of a community rich in Afro-American history called Historic Sharp Letton Hall. In my community, we have been the target of unsmart development. In the '60s, the city had a brilliant idea to bring the planned highway through our neighborhood. It targeted an area where we had most of our black homeowners, who through their GI bills and serving World War II, had purchased homes. They were forced to move under alleged intimate domain. Tim, you may know of some of these kind of dynamics. And it happened in an urban, black neighborhood. So many of these families moved, but the highway never came. What a surprise. Instead, the area became known as the Out of Buying Community, and these homes that formerly belonged to blacks were auctioned off as alleged dollar houses. It did not occur in the black neighborhood. It occurred at a church. So there was not enough community engagement about that sort of development. Then, moving a little fast forward, I also live in a community that's been very fortunate to have two stadium facilities. These stadium facilities bring on a lot of traffic, and they actually destroyed a lot of homes that were there, and businesses that were once there. Some of those businesses got grandfathered into our community. So we then became residential and also commercial. And we thought we were safe, because we take care of homes. We had three generational families that lived there. We worked with the city during O'Malley's administration, and partnered with the city to improve the public scattered houses. I think this is important to note. We're a community that believes in families, and so there were not enough home development being done. The city had public houses that were in horrible shape. But if the community partnered with the developer and HABC, we could make these homes improved. And so we stabilized the communities, gave families that had more than two children a quality house to live in. And some of these families have since moved, but more families have moved in. So what I'm trying to explain to you is that in my urban community, we have been victims of unsmart development. We don't have the resources to make great improvements on our neighborhood. Otherwise, we would buy all the lots. What has happened in our neighborhood, speculators have bought all the homes. There are no vacancies in our neighborhood. We are a few homeowners, but mostly homes that have been converted into student apartments. I think they call them multifamily, but they're actually students, and it's a transit population. They don't stay there very long. I think all four of these bills should be tabled. We need more community input on that. I live in a single-family house. I'm in a floodplain. My basement just has a crawl space, because if they did any digging in my basement, whoever gets my house once I'm gone, the whole house is going to fall down, because the footing only goes but so far. So to make a blanket bill citywide, you're excluding neighborhoods that have history of disinvestment, you're excluding communities that have history of strong community base, but you also have areas where the, they need this type of development. I don't think the law should be blanketed. I think it should consider neighborhoods by neighborhoods. I'm glad Mr. Taylor mentioned that the mayor's going to have a community engagement, which I think should have happened, you know, early on. In closing, how much time do I have, John?
You're over your time, ma'am. But I'm just trying to let you wrap up.
I appreciate that. I'm an old lady trying to get it all together. Uh-oh. Give us choices. Don't take away our ability to live a quality life. Give us choices. Don't take away our ability to have choices. Give us choices. Give us resources so we can partner in the plan of future development of this great city, Baltimore City. Let's not give it away to developers. You know, if we don't have ample parking, you know, people get shot for parking? There's been some recent reports. We don't want our blood pressure to go up because somebody's parked in front of our house. We have residential parking. But if you're going to build development, in closing, if you're going to build development and not allow for parking, you're putting us in danger. As this young lady said very eloquently, "I have to park further away from my house to bring my groceries in in another neighborhood, and I don't know what might happen to me on my way home." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Are there others here in the audience physically who wish to speak against the bill? One second, sir. Okay. Please come on up in the back. Did you want to speak? Please, come on up.
Hello.
Just introduce yourself for the record.
Yes. My name is Athen Demetridis. I live in the Laurville neighborhood of Baltimore. And I don't want to spend a lot of time rehashing things that have already been said. I already talked about the parking, the infrastructure, the sewage, more tenants. My house has had a sewage backup four times, and it just gets worse and worse. Homeownership has always been a dream of mine, and when I moved to Laurville, it became a reality. I understand the difference between homeownership and rental, and being a renter. Not everyone is a homeowner. Not everyone is a renter. It goes both ways. There are all kinds of people. However, I believe that this bill has done what I've seen many times as a businessman, is I call it the pendulum principle, where we take a pendulum and we see a problem, and we see it's a big problem, but we come up with a solution, and that pendulum is going to swing all the way in an unacceptable fashion, affecting many communities negatively. And I see the day, five, 10 years from now, people looking at each other, saying, "Oh my God, what did we do? We've destroyed our neighborhoods." Do we have a problem with housing? Yes. Do we fix it like this? No. We analyze it, we figure out what the problem. Not every neighborhood has the same issue or problem. We have to put a scalpel, not a shotgun. And that's all I want to say.
Good job. Thank you very much, sir. Are there others in here physically who want to testify? Seeing none, I'm going to turn to those online. I know that those online, we don't know exactly which side of the bill they're on, but we'll just go in whatever order you like, and people can self-identify.
Yeah, I'm just going to go from the top, so I'm going to unmute Julian Frost.
Heather, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Julian Frost. I live in Mount Vernon. So as a lifelong Baltimore City resident, I want to speak strongly in favor of this bill. Allowing property owners to do conversions and build low-density multifamily housing by right is how we slow rent growth, stimulate access to economic opportunity, and make more neighborhood small businesses viable. It is now common knowledge that single-family zoning creates an artificial scarcity of housing that has upheld segregation and contributed to soaring housing costs. There's nothing organic or natural about single-family neighborhoods in cities. If single-family zoning is indeed the uniform preference of the American people, I guess we can expect to see no change whatsoever, once this bill is mercifully passed. I also want to add that simply changing zoning is a great first step, but more is needed if we want to see a true abundance of low-density multifamily housing across our city. Future legislation should tap into recent research on how we riddle small multifamily buildings like triplexes and quadplexes with requirements that are completely disproportionate to what is required for single-family homes. To remedy this, some states and jurisdictions like Memphis and North Carolina have begun allowing apartment buildings between three and four units to be built under the International Residential Code rather than the International Building Code. Looking into these boring, small-scale details will be necessary if we want this legislation to have its intended impact. I look forward to the day when single-family zoning in Baltimore is a thing of the past. And as a renter, I'm thankful to be represented by leaders who have the vision and courage to move past old mediocre ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions for this gentleman? Seeing none, we'll go to the next person, please.
Okay. I'm going to unmute Michael Skapaniac. And I apologize for brutalizing your name.
No, that's okay.
Okay, I'm going to unmute Michael Sapannik. And I apologize for brutalizing your name.
Nope, that's okay. No worries. My name is Michael Sapannik. I am president of a group called Baltimoreans for People Oriented Places, BALTPOP for short. So housing flexibility is the phrase that really comes to our mind with this bill. The purpose of zoning is essentially prevention. And by allowing only single-family detached homes in large areas of the city, we unnecessarily limit housing flexibility to residents and aspiring residents. Single-family detached homes, given their relatively large living areas, are simply unaffordable to many prospective residents. So this bill will allow for the construction of smaller, more affordable homes in Baltimore. And it's these starter homes that we need the most. These smaller homes do almost -- do sometimes get built today, but only by exception and in limited inadequate numbers and only in a few areas. So this bill will extend that flexibility to all neighborhoods citywide, improving economic mobility and housing options for everybody. So the recent trend for Baltimore City has been one of population loss, but household gain. So Baltimore is growing in terms of households, but those households are trending smaller than in the past. There's no reason to believe this trend will reverse. So as such, our zoning code needs to adapt to this new reality. It only makes sense. With this bill, existing owners of single-family homes will be able to convert their extra homes into an accessory apartment, allowing them to maintain a home that they currently cannot afford to repair, to age in place, what have you. Now, a prime concern that I've heard that people have with this bill is that it will exacerbate parking contention. I just want to say with regards to that, when we choose to not build housing because of sensitivity over parking, what we are saying is that we are more sensitive to the pain of trying to find a place to park than we are sensitive to the pain of trying to find a place to live. And that just isn't right. An additional concern that people have with this bill is that it will allow for a flood of low-quality conversions by the we-buy-houses contingent. Now, first, there's no reason to believe that this bill by itself will unleash a flood. Both Portland, Oregon, and Minneapolis have passed similar zoning code reform, and the yield has only been in the range of, I think, 30 to 150 homes gained each year. That's not a flood. Second, by removing zoning hurdles, headaches, and uncertainty, what we do is we encourage higher-quality home building by higher-quality actors who have no interest in building on the edges and in the margins. What they want to do, they want to do right by their neighborhood and their hometown. And this bill will allow them to do it. And lastly, there are attractive examples of low-density multifamily homes right here in Baltimore right now. They're hiding in plain sight. Some examples are 4629 Chesapeake Road in Evergreen, 2942 Huntington Avenue in Remington, and 601 East 30th Street in Beverly Leveley. They all fit wonderfully into and enhance the character of their neighborhoods. More of these is what this bill will bring. We, as BALTPOP, we definitely hope that the commission finds these points helpful and convincing, and we urge its members to vote in favor of this bill. Thank you for your efforts and the opportunity for --
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions for this citizen? Hearing none, we'll move to the next person.
I'm now going to unmute Becky.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Becky Witt, and what a delight it is to get a little peek back into the Benton Building. I miss you guys. I'd like to testify in strong support of this bill. I'll just begin by saying that I live in an R3 zoning district in a single-family detached dwelling, and I would like to see more density and more housing options in my neighborhood. I echo Ms. Blaine Thomas's statement. I think we need choices. But I do not personally stand to gain in any way by this bill. My house is too small to subdivide under this bill. Mr. Murphy talked about the guy next door adding a dwelling unit. The house next door to me was converted to two units at some point. This conversion has had absolutely no negative effect on my life. You would never even know that it was two dwelling units. When I first got to city government, I assumed that there had to be some sort of research or science behind these bulk-and-yard regulations. I asked everyone I could find. I asked probably some of you in this room, and the answers boiled down to three things. One, you've got to draw the line somewhere, which I didn't find very useful to answer my question. Two, we carried them over from the old code. Also, didn't find that useful because where did the old code get these regulations from? And three, being that they sort of match what has already been built. So we put these density restrictions on neighborhoods based on what is already there. So basically, the bulk-and-yard regulations are freezing the city in time. If we believe that they came from the old code, meaning the 1971 code, these regulations were put in place or were thought up in the late 1960s. I don't think these rules deserve a presumption of legitimacy. I think they are arbitrary, outdated, exclusionary. They lead to segregation. They make housing more difficult and expensive to build, especially the smaller units that we know we need more of based on our changing demographics in 2025. I think we should get rid of them altogether, but this bill is a nice baby step in -- towards loosening these regulations. And so again, I'm in strong support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions for this citizen? Thank you, Ms. Witt.
I'm going to unmute Jed Weeks.
Good afternoon, Chairman Larry, members of the commission. I think we've submitted a BikeMore testimony and had a number of BikeMore constituents send you emails, but I just wanted to also speak as a neighbor in Remington, just based on some of the testimony today. We were a city of nearly a million people at one point, and our infrastructure and neighborhoods were actually built to support that level of density. But now, instead of families of five or six in a house, you generally have families of one or two or three in a lot of our neighborhoods. And so our neighborhoods do have the opportunity to welcome new neighbors who support local businesses and pay taxes to help maintain and repair the infrastructure that was built for that million people that folks have expressed concerns with today. But we're making that impossible. I hate to make this a generational thing, but it is. We're gatekeeping an entire generation of people who want to live in and raise their young families in a thriving city. Mr. Landers very much made this point by saying housing is only being renovated to the very top of the market where he lives, and this leaves people who are born more recently and do not have generational wealth behind. And as you said, this legislation would create more diversity of housing stock, and that would allow a broader swath of Baltimore access to live in a thriving neighborhood. We have to provide choices to more than just the people that already got theirs. The commission literally today had to tell the owner of a beloved local Hamden business they can't renovate a vacant property that could be rented to someone who also today testified they want to live there. Like, what are we doing here? We have to change this. And just for the record, I am a homeowner of a single-family home in a neighborhood that does support this, and I live next to both great renting neighbors and a homeowner who's afforded his home for over 60 years through a residential conversion that allowed one floor to be a rental that paid for his mortgage even when he was unemployed. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Questions for him? Hearing none? Okay. How many -- just to anticipate, how many more do we have? Two more?
Two more.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Chris Gwinup.
Hello. I'm Chris Gwinup, and thank you for the opportunity. I am a resident of Hamden, and I'm somewhat engaged with the BALTPOP group, but my testimony today is my own. I want to say that I fully support the Housing Options and Opportunity Bill, and I deeply appreciate the courage of its sponsors for undertaking such a crucial and unfortunately controversial issue. And to those who don't fully support the bill, I'd honestly like to tell you how my views evolved over time. I understand what it's like to depend on a car and to be used to single-family neighborhoods. I was raised in a single-family suburb and hadn't experienced anything differently until about 10 years ago, when I decided to move to Baltimore specifically to try the city lifestyle that I'd heard so much about. And it's surprising, though, even though I wanted to try that lifestyle, walking places, I underestimated just how much I was used to that single-family driving culture. You know, when I moved in, I had shock at just stopping a U-Haul in the street to unload. Streets are for moving cars. You can't just stop there. No, that doesn't make any sense. But I've learned to really appreciate the advantages that density brings, like being able to walk in my neighborhood of Hamden to most of my needs. And this, I believe, is the goal of legislation like this, to make it -- make more pleasant communities that can serve our needs in more immediate and more local ways, to encourage communities to link, to encourage communities to run into our neighbors as we walk the streets. And I just want to conclude and say that, you know, I encourage opponents of this bill to come have a conversation with me and, you know, let's talk about our values and -- because fear is easy. Let's have the courage to help improve this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission? Okay, I think it's our last -- is this right? That's our last online speaker?
Somebody else has joined as well, so...
Okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to keep track. Go right ahead.
I'm going to unmute Jay. Jay, you need to unmute on your end as well. Okay, we can come back and try him again. And then last was Deb O'Neill. Let's see here.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. This is my first time sharing on the webinar, so thank you for your patience. Yeah, so my name is Jonathan Sussman. I live in Harlem Park in a large row house with my family. I am writing or I'm sharing in support of zoning bill 25066. When I moved to Baltimore five years ago, I had the choice of, you know, as a single person, moving into an apartment downtown, you know, maybe something pretty small. But I had the opportunity to move into the first floor of a large, wide row house in Franklin Square that had been converted to four apartments. And it was affordable to me for me to rent in one of those apartments and enabled me to live next to the beautiful park, enjoy it every day, and by doing so, to really discover and love, grow to love, West Baltimore. And that has led me to purchase a home, a large row house in Harlem Park, and which I would not have been able to do if I could only live in an apartment downtown or, you know, somewhere. With the housing affordability crisis and the large row houses in West Baltimore, it's extremely expensive to renovate them for single-family homeownership. And this bill would make it easier for existing residents with large homes to afford to fix them up, and also for the many vacant homes, like the one that's next door to me, to be renovated and no longer be a blight to the neighborhood. And I'm definitely -- I'm confident that the minimum unit size requirements of 750 square feet will ensure that those new units are not too small. The last thing I'll say is that the developer that renovated my house, it's a nonprofit housing developer, they've in the past tried to renovate homes as two units to enable new homeowners to rent that one unit and use the extra income from the other unit. But the hassle of applying for a variance for every individual property has meant that they no longer are pursuing that option, even for massive 3,000 to 4,000 square foot row houses, and which locks even more people out of homeownership because of how big and how expensive these homes are to renovate. So passing this bill would enable them to start doing that again, which would bring in extra income and also provide new quality, semi-affordable rental housing in West Baltimore. So yeah, I'm in support of this. I think it'll unlock opportunities for housing, and I think it'll be a small piece of, you know, bringing reinvestment, badly needed investment in my neighborhood of Harlem Park. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Questions from the commission? Okay, we have someone?
Yeah, the last speaker would be Deb O'Neill, and then we do have a comment after that. Deb, I've requested you unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a 73-year-old disabled, single woman. I live in Ridgely's Delight, and I have owned my home here for 36 years. Ridgely's, as you know, is a historic neighborhood and with an infrastructure that goes back 100 to 125 years, which is why we are describing the problems you're hearing about, the problems that Jerry mentioned earlier. It's the reason I believe the city was under a consent decree because so much of the city's infrastructure really is not up to par. So I do think the whole issue of trying to just let this happen willy-nilly without any controls and without any planning, without being able to at least ensure that the infrastructure in the areas where development is taking place can handle it is not a good idea. Since we -- since in 2018, in the northern half of our neighborhood, we have seen massive development with as much as 40% increase in density up here. The problems that Jerry described about parking, about the infrastructure, all of those are attributable to the fact that this area of the neighborhood is simply not really structured to keep absorbing untold numbers of additional units. I am a member of our ARC, and so I have worked actively in the community to support development and also to oppose development when there was a problem with it not respecting the historic nature of the neighborhood. And so I do have a lot of experience, and I am not speaking here because I oppose development, but I am very much opposed to unplanned development, which is what is going to happen. Since 1989, when I moved here and bought my home, we have seen waves of speculation with fraud and foreclosures. I think there was a big wave in the 90s. There was another wave in 2008. And if you read the Baltimore banner, it looks like we are looking at a large New York investor who has been speculating in what sound like very questionable financing situations with perhaps questionable appraisals, and there is another wave of foreclosures coming out of that. So this whole concern that people are expressing about what may happen in terms of speculation, that's not maybe that'll happen. It looks like it might be happening now, and I think we need to pay attention to that because what that did to my property values each time it happened, and this is one of my major investments for retirement security, what that did to my property values was to destroy them for years on end. I just want to mention that my understanding is that this proposal may not actually address the larger, more rich neighborhoods in the neighborhood -- in the city like Otterbine and -- not Otterbine, I'm sorry, like Guilford and Homewood and places like that. But even if it does, my understanding is that most of those communities will not be touched by this because they have HOA agreements in place that will prevent them from being able to do this. So it's really -- it's really neighborhoods like mine that are going to feel the brunt of this. So I thank you for listening to what I have to say, the additional points I want to make. And I do want to just say I agree with everything that the people who have spoken in opposition to this have said before me. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can we have some quiet in the room, please? Okay, who -- do we have someone?
Yeah, the last was a comment that was asked that I read it in. From Emily Wazlowski, who supports the bill. RE not being able to compete with investors. Has any consideration been given to differentiating between homeowners who want to convert their primary residence to multifamily versus career multi-property owners? And that's the entirety of the comment.
Okay, thanks. All right. If there's no one else online and no one else in the room, I'm going to close the public testimony and turn to the commission. Remember, we're not -- obviously, we're not voting today. You're not in any way obliged to take a position today, but you may do as you see fit. I think it would be useful I think it would be useful, certainly, for sure, if you have any questions that will help you think through this between now and the next time we're together, at which time we are likely to vote, it would be good to get those questions, you know, on the record. And, and if you have them afterwards and want to convey them to staff, there's nothing wrong with that, or to me, there's nothing wrong with that either. But, you know, to the extent you have anything you want to say today along those lines, or that you just think, you know, demonstrates kind of what your thinking is, or that might help your fellow commissioners sort of think about this issue, I think that, that's kind of what I'm hoping for today. But, you know, you do as you see fit, you can go as far as, not as far as you'd like. And may I start with you, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Just a couple of reactions, in no particular order. First, I'd like to address the idea that this hasn't been carefully considered, or that this is somehow being rushed or done without any thought. I mean, I think that that's false. I think that evidenced just by the numerous versions of this bill that we've heard over the past few years, you know, goes to show that this issue has been sort of considered again and again by staff, legislators, agencies, as well as communities. So I would like to just respond that I don't agree with that statement. You know, at the beginning of this meeting, we heard a little bit about the funding challenges in the school system and how that is driven by population, and we're in this cycle where we're losing population and we can't make the necessary investments to attract new population because of the disinvestment. So growth, population growth, is the, the baseline requirement. That's the, the must, and, you know, figuring out the how is important, but any sort of resistance that we need to keep things the same, or slow growth, or, you know, measure our population by cars instead of people, I think all of those things are false. You know, trying to stay away from the parking thing, but, you know, multi-generational homes have the same density as multifamily conversions. So that's another fallacy that I think gets kicked around. I heard talk about infrastructure, and, and yes, we know that we've got a lot of work to do in the infrastructure department. Infrastructure is driven by tax dollars and funded by our tax base, so it, again, goes back to population. You know, I heard testimony from a woman who lives in a neighborhood that is near one of the hospitals, one of the universities, and she talked about rental demand, rental population from students and from nurses and other essential workers. I heard someone say that single-family neighborhoods are the backbone of our city. It was Mr. Landers, I believe. But I would say that those essential workers who are not exclusively in the home-owning seg, home-owning segment of our population are the backbone of our city. So creating those rental opportunities for, that are affordable and accessible for folks, I think, is the more important work. Mr. Sussman online reminded me that I started my tenure here in Baltimore in an apartment that was a, you know, a conversion, on the fringe of Butchers Hill, which is one of our, you know, esteemed and well-regarded row house neighborhoods that has, you know, great homeownership. And so that mix is what really makes our neighborhoods vibrant. You know, people, people cite poor transit and, you know, because we lump all this together, the housing, the parking and everything, and people say, "Well, we're not New York. We can't do that because we don't have good enough transit." Well, transit requires density, and so we're trying to build the density so that we can support the transit, so that we can grow and be better. So, you know, we're not ignoring those issues, we're trying to address those issues. That's it.
Commissioner Jones? Thank you, everybody, for your testimony. Since moving back to Baltimore 12 years ago, number one concern has always been population growth, no matter what issue we talk about across the board, a solution to many of our issues of population growth. And I know there's, yeah, sorry. And, and I know there's many debatable ways to which we can address population growth, but this in particular is closing housing gaps that we really need in Baltimore City. And other commissioners really want to think about the affordability access here that would change particularly my neighborhood in an extremely positive way, but also in addressing the main concern, capital improvement. When we go through the CIP process next year, we're going to go back to, we need more people so we can do all of our projects, right? So I think I would like us, when we think on your own about this, there's arguments of all the ways you can try to get people to move to your city, and I want to say that I'm very supportive, and I think this is a brave way to put forward, to say this is one way we can address them.
Mr. Coach, will we go down to you?
Sure. Well, last weekend, I was a tour guide on Live Baltimore's tour of neighborhoods in North Baltimore, Northeast Baltimore, Hartford Road Corridor, Bella Road Corridor, and I was just struck by what solid communities they are. They're brilliantly solid. You know, you can raise a family there, you can afford to live there. $200,000, 250,000. These days, that's semi-affordable. So I, I left that tour with some optimism that we can find a home for everyone in Baltimore. I think that the best prescription, and I agree with you, for Baltimore, is more people in our neighborhoods and more people, more kids in our schools, that, that these will both make our city stronger. We have a big supply issue. We really don't have any, you know, it's very hard to find an affordable home in a safe community if you're starting out. I just watched my daughter go through this. Took her a year and a half to find a place, and she's now on a fourth-floor walk-up. But these, the supply issue translates into an affordability issue for all of our residents. And so after thinking about this, I've got a couple of suggestions for both the advocates for this legislation and the detractors to give some consideration to, and hopefully make the proposed legislation maybe a little more responsible. So I support the legislation. And its nature, I think, is in a good, good place. But I, I have a couple of, of suggestions, you know, starting with four dwelling units permitted as of right. I think we have structures that can accommodate four units, and zoning code suggests that we can do that. But what I do think is it potentially creates dramatic changes in, in neighborhoods on blocks without any notice to the community or to neighbors, because it's as of right. So you could be living your best life in your house, and, you know, the place next door, suddenly it becomes a four-unit dwelling. There's no notice required. And then suddenly, you're, you've got, you know, you do that twice or three times in some more fragile neighborhoods, and I think you're going to see a real, you know, a real issue with neighbors. So I think that not having any form of neighborhood participation in an as-of-right framework, or even any change, awareness of changes, can be really damaging for legacy owners in our communities in particular. I don't, I actually think that a practical and beneficial approach to assist current homeowners would be to allow them to do an in-law suite, allow them to do, in addition to accommodate their kid in school, allow them to add a rental unit. In fact, I've got a client right now in Mount Washington, old elderly couple, big old house, they desperately hope this legislation passes because they want to stay in place. They, and they've got space and a lot and all that. So it's a real, I think there's an opportunity here for this to really practically help people. I think that, I think that allowing two DUs would, would ease the conversion process for homeowners, the change would be incremental to the community while allowing a public review of larger, potentially more disruptive changes associated with larger conversions. And I think that another suggestion would be data collection. Nobody's talked about that, because what I have heard, though, is we, while we have comparison cities like Portland or Memphis, which are great examples, what works for Memphis works for Memphis, and what works for Portland works for Portland, I think that we desperately need to find out what's going to work for Baltimore. And so I find myself thinking that, you know, there's no data relevant to Baltimore data that can actually predict the impact of this legislation. There's a lot of aspirational thoughts, but I think that, that, you know, well, you know, there's, I think that market information can be tracked and analyzed as a basis for evaluation. In fact, the city has partners already that do this as a part of their mission, whether they're institutional, like, like Benia, whether it's Live Baltimore, who's very successfully been able to, you know, support homeownership programs. People exist today who can gather information. And why is that important? Well, for the same reason that the chair was saying how use would be to track population changes in schools, because we need to know what's going on so that somewhere downstream, we can turn the dials on this legislation, so that we can both, 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 I think, find stronger, more beneficial outcomes, as well as limit harmful, harmful impacts. So I, I really think that similar to the MIZAD legislation that we passed, boy, it would have been 15 years ago, where there was an annual audit to track the changes of real estate uses related to industrial use and deepwater port, we could find ourselves in three or four years actually knowing what the heck it is that we're talking about here, because nobody in this room really knows for sure today. And what would you do with that information? Well, again, much like MIZAD, the value of that information was to help ease anxiety and pave a way for, um, a mechanism that will, that will allow us to find a calendar date in the future. Maybe it's three years out, maybe it's four years, five years out. Where in a non-political way, we could say, okay, July of 2030, we're going to look at this data, and we're going to be able to determine, did this program work the way we thought it would? Should we change it? Should we accelerate it? Sitting here, I don't know that anyone can actually answer that, not without data. So my, those would be my three recommendations. One is, is two as-of-right, three and four units conditional as a way of, you know, the majority of the people we've heard from are all about, well, I, I needed an apartment, or I needed, you know, I just needed another unit. We should, we should help our city residents do that. And then data collection, key to know what it is we're talking about. And then frankly, in the MIZAD, there was a sunset. And again, I don't, I don't know that that's the right term, that sort of sets off a lot of alarms. So I don't know that we need a sunset, but I do think that we need a date in the future that we can take this data and assess the success of the program. My suggestions.
Thank you. Commissioner Horn?
Thank everybody for their testimony. I, I just, I, I have some tension because I, I did hear the mayor's representative talk about the intent of the bill to fight vacant property and expand affordable housing. But then I also hear the anxiety of a lot of people in this room and also online about the unintended consequences of accelerating displacement and undermining homeownership. And so one of the things that I did is I did sort of research Portland and some of the lessons that they said other jurisdictions should learn from. And, and, and I just want to focus on, on one, and they, they said we need to combine zoning reform with equity measures. And that's, that's one thing that I would like to see more in the report that's given. In the report from staff that was given to us, there is an equity section, but it really wasn't that much there. And so I would like a little bit more intent about how we will ensure that if we do pass this bill, some of the unintended consequences aren't there, particularly are there any anti-displacement strategies, inclusionary housing, tenant protections, things like that. I heard that coming through and through with all the letters, it was, it was a major theme that I just can't get out of my mind, and, and so I would like some thought in terms of some of the equity measures that would be put in place.
Commissioner Griffin?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your testimony. And I would just say, we've, most people, or most of, a lot of the testimony focused on the fact that we would, we talked, that these would, these units would all be rentals. And I don't think that, I think that's not the case. I think, in fact, when I moved here 20 years ago, I couldn't believe there wasn't a condo market here. Every, there's no condo market. I think that, I'm not sure, but I think that this would possibly open the doors for people to convert some of these multifamily, or these large row homes where I live in Mount Vernon, in Bolton Hill, in Butchers Hill, into a Reservoir Hill, into condos. And that would be a way for people to buy and be homeowners in a, but more affordably, without spending $700,000, $800,000 to buy a 6,000-foot-square row home. So I think that's important to make the distinction that these aren't going to all be rental units, and that we may, in fact, continue to see homeownership increase, which I think is the goal in terms of property base here, property taxes. But I also want to say, too, that I, I don't think for every, everybody wants to own a home. I think times have changed. People don't, there are many people in my neighborhood and others where I visit who absolutely do not want to own. They are happy renting, they would like to see more rental units on the market to choose from, larger rental units, some two or three bedrooms, very, very hard to find in this city. And I think that is a way, we need to get people here, we need to get them moving from other cities that surround us, and I think this bill would, would encourage that. Thank you.
Counsel?
Thank you, colleagues. So I'll say, just about over four years ago, the council member from the Ninth District introduced a bill that would change the conversion process, conversion by ordinance process that would also allow for buy-right units based upon square footage in a standard fashion. And that was for the purpose, that council member was mentioning, that they were hearing from community members who wanted to take care of these properties in Franklin Square and Harlem Park that were extremely large, but again, there were challenges. There were responsible developers who said, "Hey, I want to do an in-law suite, but I have to go and do this whole ordinance process, it's very difficult." And as that bill began to catch wind, we had a lot of pushback. And I represent the Ninth District, I represent Harlem Park and, and heard Mr. Sussman's points. But the, but the pushback they received was that, why are we doing it in, it shouldn't just be in our neighborhoods? It should be in their neighborhoods, too, because they won't do this in other communities.
Okay.
And so what happened is there is discussion, there were, there was a lot of meetings, there was, there was the concern about what would happen at that time. So the bill just sort of sat there. And I know there are other members of the council who started thinking, well, maybe there is a way for this to be a citywide issue, so it doesn't wind up being localized in only those neighborhoods. When I say those neighborhoods, those neighborhoods on the west side or on the east side that are predominantly black. Now we have a bill that is in front of us, and it's almost like the same argument is also being flipped on a ten. also being flipped on a ten. So now that it isn't everywhere, every place, people were saying, we don't want it to be everywhere. It shouldn't be a blanket approach. I would say there is a place for homeownership, there's a place for rental. I would also look at other jurisdictions. If you look at the transformed Baltimore, initially, the conversion by ordinance process was actually taken out of that, that's a longer story as well. But a lot of this does wind up being, it's political, but it's also personal. And I understand this as a homeowner, I understand this as a representative. The reality is that we have conditions in our city that need to be addressed through changes in some of our policies. So I'm thankful to hear from residents who are both supportive of this, who also have questions and concerns, because we did read through some of those statements. And I think it's a really good opportunity for us to hear that, that bit of feedback and also take that and digest it as we move forward. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilman. I guess I would just add a few things. I will point out, and this was referenced obliquely, but I'll make it clear, the, there was a similar bill introduced in 2022 called the Abundant Housing Act, which was referred to. And I have before me the Planning Commission report, it's before I was on the commission. Some of you, I don't know how many of you, maybe all of you, but were on the commission at the time. And what the, what the commission recommended at the time was, I think essentially what Commissioner McCouch had suggested. The bill did have a four-unit by right. The Planning Commission recommendation was two units by right and three or four units by conditional use. So there is that, and the bill did not, the bill failed at the end of term, so we don't really know what happened, what would have happened had it gotten back to the, to the council. That is certainly one way to do it. It seems to be at least the way Commissioner McCouch is thinking. You know, we could have a discussion about the relative merits of the conditional use tool. It is on one hand legally, and I guess I, you know, have this perspective on it, legally not that hard to get a conditional use. It's not supposed to be that hard. You just have to meet the conditions that are in the code. Mr. Murphy is, that was just very well. But, but there is certainly process associated with it that is meaningful and would at least avoid the sort of, oh, the things just show up next door to you. So, you know, that's something to consider, I suppose. So what are my thoughts other than that? First of all, the history of single-family zoning in this country is demonstrably designed to be exclusionary. It just is. It doesn't mean, and I'm thinking about Mr. Murphy's comments, and I know him well, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that there aren't people who appreciate the merits of it or the positive impact they perceive it has in their community. And fortunately, over time, the city is now blessed with both white and black and other single-family communities. So you have to kind of keep in your head both of those things at the same time, which is that today, I don't really know what the, what the sort of proportion is of neighborhoods that are predominantly white or black or single family, but, but there's much more diversity. But it didn't start out that way, and it was not intended to start out that way. So, you know, I struggle a little with this sort of American dream idea. It's easy to say that. And I think in many ways today, it is a dream for some people living in those communities and maybe a dream for diverse people living in those communities. But it's also hard to get away from the fact that it was, this was not, this was not an innocuous tool when it was, when it was first deployed. And so I really commend the mayor and others who want to say, we need to deal with this horrible legacy of single-family zoning, redlining, all the other things that we know well and that Baltimore has stood for in very negative ways. And that is not unimportant. But I'm also trying to figure out, like, what will be the impact if we do this now? And I'm trying not to separate, but to sort of synthesize my genuine appreciation for the unpleasant history of single-family zoning with trying to figure out, if we do this today, what happens tomorrow? If we do this today, what happens in a year? If we do this today, what happens in five years or 10 years? And I must say, I'm not totally sure that I, that I know yet. But I said this about other things in this commission since I've been on it. I want to change things here. I want things to be different. I want us to be aggressive about trying to attract residents. I want us to be, I mean, I've said from the beginning, it's all about growth. We've now all said it to each other. We're all saying it's, and mayors, it's all about growth. I want to find things that will help the city grow. And I genuinely believe that this proposal has tremendous potential to allow other different housing types, to allow growth, to deal with those, those needs. But surely none of us want to do it at the expense of other people. It's not supposed to be a zero-sum game. It's supposed to be net, you know, net positive. I do take to heart some, but not all, frankly, of the expressions of concern. I think some of those come from a bias, and I mean bias in the true sense of the word, not in a pejorative way. I just mean, like, people are looking at it from their perspective. It's not a question of like, it's not, I'm not assigning any sort of motivation or blame or anything. It's just, what does it look like from your perspective? I think that's what bias really is. And I think we have to be careful not to allow that bias to inform our ultimate decision. But I also don't want to ignore, you know, people's concerns. And folks who are opposed to this bill are not opposed to it to be mean. They're opposed to it because they have concerns. I think our, but I think that the fact that they have concerns does not necessarily mean those concerns, that we have to credit all of those concerns. And I think that the challenge for us, the challenge for the city council when the time comes, is to listen to folks who are in good faith, coming and telling you about these concerns, even if they're, they come from a sort of personal, you know, perspective and bias. But how do, how do we really feel, how do we, how do we filter that? Because our job is to try and make land use policy and economic development policy. So we have to sort of sort all that out. I remember when the bulk and yard bills were here and people were objecting to the bulk and yard bills. And I said, if we keep having bulk and yard bills that, if we keep having them because, if we keep having them and every time they come, we say, well, that seems like a perfectly reasonable idea, then there's something wrong with the bulk and yard code, which is why I was very supportive of the current bulk and yard bill, because we have to, have to change it. I did say at the time, I don't know if these are the right numbers. People were like, well, we're cutting them in half. Isn't that arbitrary? I'm like, I don't know how you get to exactly what the right number is. I just know that the current bulk and yard numbers don't work. And this seems like a reasonable, you know, let's do this and see what we can do so that we can stop having these variance bills come through, through the process, clog the process, clog councilman's Ninth District, when it's like entirely, you know, it's obvious that they all come and we say, well, this is fine. So if they're fine, let's fix it. And it's just so ironic and coincidental that we had that discussion earlier today about the Hamden property. I mean, it's just, you know, it's just pure happenstance. But that is a real problem. It's like the bulk and yard bill. Everybody said, this is a great idea. I know that property. I've been to that bar, right? Like, this is crazy. Why should the, why should the law stand in the way of that when everybody thinks it's a good idea? So all this is to say, at the end, that I feel like there is opportunity here. I want to do this. I think we need to shake things up. I think we need to take, we need to look at, we need to find a way to grow and to create more density and to provide more housing opportunities at lower costs. We need to do all of those things. And I do think that fundamentally, this bill will do that, whether, whether, and I'm just not sure yet exactly what the final bill should look like. I'm not sure whether this exact, whether the bill as written is a solution or whether there is something we can do that will achieve these goals, that will potentially mitigate any, any sort of potential downsides. And I mean downsides in two respects. I mean downsides that people perceive because perception matters. But I mean, we have a responsibility to get beyond the perception and respectfully say to people, that may be your perception, that may be the way you look at it, but we may just not agree. And the council will have to sort of find its own way on those issues as well. And, you know, we'll see how it goes. So I'm, I'm, you know, this, this part of the meeting was intended just for us to sort of talk this out a little bit in a public session and to hear from people and to ask questions. And I guess just like each of you, I'm just trying to provide some insight into how, how I think we should approach this. I want to make this happen. I think it's a good idea. I just want to also think through whether we have, whether, whether the precise formulation is exactly what we, what we need to do to, you know, is the prescription, is the prescription the right one for the, for the malady? So that's where I am. And I'll continue to think about it as will everybody else. Okay. So now each of you has heard everybody else. Is there any sort of round two? I'm not saying everybody has to speak at length, but, but I'm asking that meaning, like, did anybody hear anything that they just, it would be useful today before we dismiss to sort of say, I heard what you said, Commissioner, but what about this? Or let me ask you this question? Just want to make sure we, we have that opportunity. So I'll just start.
I have a question for Eric, actually.
That's fine. We'll just go, we'll just go around and then we'll see what people have.
Eric, related to the question of subdivision versus rental, does this legislation allow us to take a unit, a building, and subdivide it into four separate homeownership opportunities?
Okay. So parsing terms, subdivision to us means actually creating separate whole parcels. Getting at the condo idea, which I think is what you're really asking to us, whether it's a multifamily building that is owned by one person or whether it is in a condo regime ownership, it does not matter in zoning terms. They're both multifamily dwellings. Condos are actually created as an action through, I think, the state comptroller or Secretary of State. It's at the, at the state level anyway, that the condo is created as an entity. So we recognize the separate air parcels for taxation purposes, but for zoning, they're both multifamily and are no different. Now, if somebody wanted to physically separate their parcel into multiple pieces, they'd have to follow the requirements, have to meet the requirements of zoning that has never changed. But hopefully that answers the question.
That's very good. That's very helpful.
And just a note also, Commissioner Allen is online in case she had any comments to share.
I'm confident we'll give her that final opportunity. Commissioner Horn, anything you want to add?
Just want to just kind of double down on that word equity. We have taken a long time as a commission to kind of use that as a basis for our decisions. And so that's something I'm going to really look at in terms of how we are addressing that equity piece of this.
No further comments. Thank you.
Nothing else?
No further comments. Thank you.
Just real quick, since because you brought up, or you didn't bring it up, but in reference to the 2022 Planning Commission recommendation for the two units by right, I was here, I can't believe that that was three and a half years ago. It feels like it was yesterday. And the reason that I'm comfortable with this bill, in addition to what we recommended before, is related to the square footage that has been dialed in, the square footage requirements per unit that have been dialed in here. And just to set an example, if you've got a, a small row house block with houses that are 1,500 square feet, that allows for two units, that could be impactful in a, say, an R3 neighborhood, lower density, larger houses, 5,000 square feet on a half-acre lot. Well, if you put three or four units in there, just based on space, to me, that's less, that's less density than you get by putting two units in a small row house. So I think that, again, the evolution and the reiteration and consideration has resulted in a more fine-tuned bill that maybe can be appropriately applied across multiple zones addressing Councilman Bullock's points. To Commissioner Horn, thank you for raising the equity issue, and we absolutely should, you know, flesh out that analysis. I want to make sure that when we talk about equity, we also consider the equity impacts of inaction. Because right now, we've got a situation where these conversions are allowed in certain neighborhoods. So certain neighborhoods are, to the extent that this is impactful, certain neighborhoods are being impacted more than others. And to the extent that this is about creating resident opportunities, rental opportunities, affordable opportunities for people to live in neighborhoods that have resources, neighborhoods that have access to good schools, supermarkets, transit, those aren't the neighborhoods that we currently allow conversions in. So we're forcing people who can't afford homeownership at the top of the market to rent in our disinvested neighborhoods. There's a huge equity concern about that, and this bill addresses it. So thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, it makes you feel any better, June of 2023.
Makes me feel a little bit better.
Well, the bill was, the bill was 2022, but didn't make it here until June of 2023. Okay. Well, Director, you want to add anything? I'm sorry, Commissioner Allen, thank you. Commissioner Allen, want to add anything?
No, I'm, I'm just listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, okay. Here we are, as promised. I think a very thorough discussion and airing, very frank discussion. I appreciate very much all of you who came to testify, both in person and online. We will decide when the bill will get a second hearing here at the, at the commission. We have two other, we, the mayor's office has announced, and as I said earlier, help me out, the 20th and the 27th on Mondays. I don't know the exact logistics. I don't know if the planning staff knows, but those will obviously be announced through planning and through the mayor, I'm sure, as the bill sponsor. Our next, our next meeting is on the 30th, which would be after both the 20th and the 27th, obviously. So we'll have to figure out the right sequence here. I think the commission want, the commission ought to participate in moving this along and contributing value and thought. And ultimately, of course, as I said earlier in my opening remarks, it's really going to be the, the council who has to wrestle with the final form, the final form of the bill. But we are here to try and, and be another big stop along the way where we can have some serious discussion and, and think this through. So I hope we'll be able to do that. For the commissioners also, I would say, if, you know, if sometime over the next day or week or whatever, you have other thoughts, the staff is here to help answer those questions. And, you know, my guesses you will have as you think about it, some, oh, I should have asked that, or now I have a new question. Obviously, you should let, let our staff know and they will, they will work on getting you an appropriate response that might help clarify your, your thinking. Okay. So is there, is there any, does anybody else want to say anything on this? I don't want to cut it off prematurely. Okay. All right. So with that, last item on the agenda, I will take a motion to adjourn from one of the commission members, please.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourned. Thank you all very much.